All right, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. 1.1, Call it a Order, 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll go ahead and ask Ms. Gallardo to lead us, please.
Please stand and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
All right, 1.3, Approval of the Agenda.
So move.
And, sorry, we're gonna be making some changes, I believe.
So President Cervios, may I just add three changes to the agenda today? First, I'd like to ask the Board if we can move Action Item 9.3, the naming of the Public Safety Building, to be done immediately after the approval of the agenda. The second request is to include the Native American Senior Recognition for our students at San Gregonio under Item 2.3. And the third request is to amend the agenda by adding the D-LAC Annual Report to be done immediately after the 2.4 resolution.
All right, so now can I get a motion?
Madam President, I'll amend my motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Thank you. So it has motion amended by Dr. Wyatt and a second by Ms. Alexander to include those items. Can I get a vote? And then I'll start with Ms. Gallardo.
Aye.
And then also, one second, and then also we do have Ms. Medina online, and I believe Mr. Ramos as well is online. So if I can get-
That's an aye. I'm sorry, that's an aye.
Awesome. And then Ms. Patience.
Aye.
Thank you.
May I get a verbal from Ms. Medina, please?
She did.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion passed. Moving on to 2.0, Special Presentations and Recognizations. I'll turn it over to Ms. Oh, that's right, we just amended. So we're gonna go ahead and move to 9.3. I'll pass it over to Ms. Goodwin.
At this point, Madam President, because it's an action item, you're going to open the floor to any public comments related to Item 9.3.
Thank you so much. So... It is an action item. So on July 2nd... Okay, so on July 2nd, 2024, the Board of Education requested that the Board Policy be followed with regards to the naming of buildings per Board Policy 7310. A naming committee was formed and included. Nine community members. It is recommended that the following resolution be adopted. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves naming the Public Safety Building, the James Ramos Center for Public Safety, as recommended by the District Naming Committee. So I will look for a motion for that.
A motion to approve?
Second. So moved by Dr. Wyatt and second by Mr. Santos. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none? Vote, please. Ms. Medina?
Aye.
I have a comment. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. No, just want to say that, you know, I think it's an honor today that we're gonna be naming our Public Safety Building and after our Assemblyman, Mr. James Ramos, who I see on the screen, who's been a huge supporter and advocate for our safety personnel, not just here for our district, but in our city and our county. So Mr. Ramos, Assemblymember Ramos, congratulations and thank you for all your support as well.
Thank you so much.
Yes, so it does look like the motion has passed, and I don't know if Mr. Ramos, you wanted to share some words with us?
Thank you, Madam President and Board Members. This is an honoring and humbling event here today for to be able to have our name being brought forward on the agenda. But, you know, I can't accept all this on my own. Certainly, the upbringing of myself, my dad, James Ramos Senior, my mom, Rowena Ramos, has a lot to play into that. And really, growing up here on the reservation, Indian Reservation, going to the local public schools, I never thought that one day that this honor would come, especially when you look back in history, when there was militias that were formed to rid our people of the mountains. We've come a long way to be able to move forward with this honoring. But it also sends a message to our local community, for all the students and those in our community, to continue to follow your dreams and your dreams of change for our community, to be able to move forward. Growing up and still residing on the reservation, this is a testament to all, all those that continue to move forward. Education has played a large role in the success of where I am today. Education is one of the few things that I continue to say, that once you attain it, no one could take that from you, as well as your culture and spirituality. And the different roles that I've been able to play as a public servant within the Community College Board, State Board of Education, County Board of Supervisors, and now in the State Assembly, and former Chairperson of the Seminole Tribal Community, continues to show that our community and products of the San Bernardino City Unified School District have a voice in our community, not just there in San Bernardino, but across the state and one day across the nation. We continue to offer that hope that's there around us. We also have been a strong supporter of public safety, public safety, but also resources to those that are out there. One of my first bills dealt with social bullying for our students in our K-12 system. But also recognizing the Public Safety Building and the resources that will come out of there will be a voice for our community. And it also, just want to say that this is truly humbling and honored to be able to have this item there and the vote take place. But it also stands as a reminder to every student, especially those who feel unseen during their times and in their lives, that no matter where your story is, is where you end up and where you take your story to. So this is very humbling, and I do accept it on behalf of all those that are out there that still have a voice to add to our community that feel unseen, that we're unseen no more. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Ramos. And I know that you wanted to be here in person, but we, you know, we didn't want to wait any longer to bring this item forward. So I really appreciate you being willing to, you know, participate remotely. Anyway, and thank you for the committee that has, you know, brought these names forward for recommendation. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I can let my mom know?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Alrighty, moving on to 2.1, National Speech and Debate Association Recognition. Yes, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Goodwin.
Thank you, President Cervios. Good evening. My name is Mary Rone Goodwin, and I am the Director of Communications and Community Relations. I'd like to invite our Board Members and our Executive Cabinet to make their way towards the front of the dais here and along the side here as we prepare for tonight's recognitions. I am now going to turn the microphone over to our brilliant Communications Manager, Maria Garcia, for the rest of our celebrations.
Thank you, Mary Rone. This evening, the Board of Education proudly recognizes an extraordinary student whose voice has captivated audiences across the entire nation. At this time, we invite Tatiana Eden Ochoa to come forward to be recognized for her outstanding achievements in speech and debate. We also ask that her family join us in celebrating Tatiana for reaching a huge milestone that is actually the first of its kind in SBCUSD. Representing Cajon High School, Tatiana has earned the prestigious distinction of being ranked number one in the country. That's right, number one in the country by the National Speech and Debate Association. Her journey to the top has been marked by unmatched eloquence, tireless preparation, and a deep commitment to advocacy through the power of words. Tatiana has not only brought national acclaim to Cajon High School, but she has also elevated the standard of excellence for all students in SBCUSD. And she has served her fellow students by serving as a Student Board of Education member for two years. Audience, please put your hands together once again to celebrate Tatiana. And I am certain that if we keep an eye out for this young lady, she will go far. Please, please remain. Because also here to celebrate Tatiana's achievement is County Board of Education President, Dr. Gwen Dowdy Rogers. Let's welcome her to the podium.
So good evening to everyone. One of the most important things, and I think the most powerful thing that we do in governance is to be able to recognize our students. A lot of the things that we do, we know we do it for our students. And so it has been my distinct honor to find out this information. I know, I know, Superintendent, I'm always finding things out. But I find things out about our students, and it just, it's a delight to do this honor. And so on behalf of the Board of Education of San Bernardino County, perhaps some of you had heard, at our board meeting on last Monday, we did a recognition and presented a wonderful plaque to her for her outstanding achievement. And when you talk about public speaking, and that's not an easy task. But to rise to a national honor, it is noteworthy, and we went out and told everyone all about it. And we hope that the papers pick this up because there is a lot of news that takes place, but this is good news. So on behalf of San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools, Tatiana Eden Ochoa, Cajon High School student, in recognition of earning the number one national ranking with the National Speech and Debate Association through outstanding performance in competition, public speaking, and service activities, and for representing Cajon High School and the County of San Bernardino with distinction, you are hereby presented with this certificate on the 20th day of May, 2025, signed by myself, Dr. Gwen Dowdy Rogers, and Ted Alejandre Superintendent of Schools, Transforming Lives Through Education. You are to be commended.
Congratulations once again to Tatiana Eden Ochoa. This evening, the Board of Education and Superintendent Adeano are honored to recognize two of our outstanding schools for earning one of the most prestigious honors in public education in California. Both Palm Avenue Elementary School and Ramona Alessandro Elementary School have been named 2024 California Distinguished Schools. Give it up for them. This is an achievement that reflects their unwavering commitment to academic excellence, equity, and student success. This designation by the California Department of Education is reserved for schools that demonstrate exceptional student performance and progress toward closing the achievement gap. It is a direct result of the tireless dedication of teachers, staff, students, and families working together every day to create supportive, high-achieving learning environments. At this time, I would like to invite the principals of our distinguished schools to come forward to be recognized by the Board of Education. Each principal will now be presented with a certificate of recognition on behalf of the Board of Education and Superintendent Adeano to commemorate this milestone. We will start with Ramona Alessandro Elementary. Would Principal Reginald Thomas please come forward? We also... We also invite Ramona Alessandro's former principal, Teresa Hopkins, now the principal of Hunt Elementary, to come forward. Teresa laid the groundwork for much of this achievement. Congratulations, and let's give Ramona Alessandro Elementary another round of applause. And now, please join me in welcoming the Principal of Palm Avenue Elementary School, Dr. Janice Gordon. Both principals will be headed to Disneyland later this month where they will receive their official award. And would Dr. Gordon's staff at Palm Avenue Elementary please come on down to celebrate? To our entire school communities... To our entire school communities at Palm Avenue and Ramona Alessandro, thank you for being shining examples of what is possible when we lead with purpose, teach with passion, and believe in the brilliance of every student. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor. Board of Education and Cabinet, please remain standing at your place as we continue with our special recognitions. At this time, I will turn the microphone over to Director of Multilingual Services, Tex Acosta.
Thank you so much, and good evening, everyone. It is my distinguished pleasure to recognize an individual that I've been associated with for really over 30 years. I've been working with her formerly in this district, I'd say since about 2008. But before that, we also worked together in the private sector, so I know this individual very, very well. I can tell you that she works tirelessly to represent our students, fights for everything that they need to get, and is one of the best assets that we have in our district. So at this point, I'd like to bring up Sindra Weber. If you would come up, please. And along with her, I want to recognize Levi, who is also a resident senior at Cal State San Bernardino, if you would come up, one of the elders.
Hi, my name is Sindra, and I am the specialist for the Native American Education Program that our district has. And I would like to honor one of our seniors today. I have, this child has been in the Indian Education Program since first grade. He got a four-year scholarship to Berkeley's Engineering Department. And he is the district's first Native American salatorian. Salatorian, sorry. I have worked with him for years. I am so proud of him. And Achilles, do you want to come up? Our native culture, when we want to honor someone years ago in the past, we'd give them horses or buffalo hide or something like that. So now, we give blankets. And I know that there are three of Achilles Elementary School teachers here, and if you would come up, I'd really appreciate it. Their unwavering commitment to education, equity, and community, community well-being has made a lasting difference in the lives of countless SBCUSD students. Under the leadership of CEO Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers, who many of you are familiar with from her years serving on this governing board, Arrowhead United Way continues to show up for our families with compassion, urgency, and impact. I now welcome Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers to the podium to say a few words.
They've already been warned, this is some of the staff here, and they know this really, first of all, I just have to say, thank you, thank you so much. This work that these individuals do, I could not do it without their pushing, their hard work, their dedication, and many of you all know that Arrowhead United Way has been in this community long before I even took the reins and continued to do the work. And I've left, we've left for you, when you get back to your seats, you'll see a summary of some of the hard work that has been done over the past five years that I took over. And the importance of that work has not only spread out to just this community, but there's 25 geographical areas that we do serve. But here, we, it's home, it's here, we make sure that those students that will take over when we do leave, know that we made our mark with them, and at our last annual meeting, which some of you had an opportunity to attend, we were able to give $9,000 in scholarship to students right here in San Bernardino City Unified School District. And that, again, is our commitment to that work. Not only is we're doing that, but there is another population that often is overlooked, and that is our veterans. And we are doing a lot of work around our veterans to make sure that we care about them and their families, which also have children in this community. So although I wear many, many hats, the work that we do, we're passionate about it, when the doors closed during COVID, we were right there serving the community, doing what needs to be done. So the only unfortunate thing today is I didn't get the memo, Superintendent, I didn't get the memo that was supposed to be in red and black, you guys all know, that once a cardinal, always a cardinal, however, something more important is the reason why I have this color on, not so much that it's bright and it does stand out, but it's Mental Health Awareness Month, and that is important, too. I had an opportunity to speak to Lancashire students today and remind them of the importance of mental health, and we all have gone through a lot of things, but this work, and the work of Arrowhead United Way, is the foundation of our community when you need support, when you need funding, financing, whatever it is that we can do. So to all of these people standing here, you have Edwina Barker, who is, she is the, like, my boss, basically, and I say that because she's been there a very, very long time, she's trying to retire, but I said no, see how long that works. And then we have Roxanne, who makes sure, I promise you, the money is in check, CBO is in check over there, and then we have Tanya, who you all are familiar with, Tanya Rose Hensley, who is come aboard and is out in the community connecting, and then we have the wonderful, wonderful Chris Ortiz, who was a graduate of Cal State San Bernardino, you all may remember him if you've been on the board for a while, he used to come, remember Dr. Wyatt, and he is now serving us, and serving us well, so give it up to them for the work. Thank you all, appreciate you.
And Dr. Gwen, Dr. Rogers, please come forward to receive your award. I also did hear that Chris is a graduate of Pacific High School. Thank you once again to the Arrowhead United Way. And now, it is time to present tonight's outstanding student, parent, and employee awards. These awards allow the Board of Education to honor deserving students for demonstrating excellence in academics, athletics, fine arts, and citizenship. This also lends an opportunity to recognize parents, volunteers, and employees who have gone above and beyond in support of their schools and departments. All of tonight's honorees will receive a certificate of appreciation from our Board of Education. Student and parent award winners will receive free tickets for their family to attend the San Bernardino Symphony, and our student honorees will also receive a district bumper sticker and yard sign, which you will receive on your way out. Audience, these presentations will take approximately 20 minutes total, and we kindly ask that you return to your seat after receiving your award as a courtesy to our fellow honorees. With that in mind, when your name is called, would you and your immediate family, please come forward to accept your award by walking down the ramp? You will be greeted by Superintendent Mauricio Arellano, the Board of Education, and your principal, please pause in the center for a photo. After your photo, please finish shaking hands with the board members, and use the walkway to my right to return to your seat. All right, are we ready? Our first school site recognitions are from Highland Pacific Elementary School. And we see Principal Courtney Weber is ready to join us. Audience, let's welcome our first outstanding student, Carmen Rose Burmeil. Carmen is a fourth grader in Elizabeth Lopez's class. She has shown outstanding academic achievement as reflected in her impressive math and CAPS scores, math and English CAPS scores. Carmen's dedication to learning includes having a strong work ethic and growth mindset. She consistently strives for excellence and sets a wonderful example for her classmates. This is a well-deserved award for a bright and hard-working scholar who makes HYPAC proud. Her mother's a teacher in the district. And now, let's give it up for fourth grader Jocelyn Diana Quinteros. Would her family please join us? Jocelyn has made incredible strides in her language development and has now been successfully reclassified. Her hard work, perseverance, and commitment to mastering English have truly been inspiring. She has demonstrated remarkable growth both academically and personally, serving as a shining example of what dedication and determination can achieve. This is a well-deserved accomplishment. Congratulations, Jocelyn, your parents Oscar Quinteros and Syley Lopez must be so proud. Our first outstanding parent award winner is Chica Jones. Chica is an exceptional member of the HYPAC community, her presence is felt daily through her unwavering dedication and warmth. She volunteers in her son Nicholas's class and supports the school with grace and generosity. Her kindness, reliability, and genuine care for all students and staff make her a true gem. We are deeply grateful that Chica Jones helps make hope happen at HYPAC and helps SBCUSD shine. Audience, now please help me welcome bilingual clerk one, Maria Teodoro Alvaran. Maria joined SBCUSD this year and made an immediate impact, starting as a bilingual clerk and now working at a class as an attendance assistant. She stepped up to run office operations when HYPAC was without a secretary. Her calm, professional presence and can-do attitude shine even under pressure. Maria's quiet leadership, dedication, and genuine support uplift our entire school community and help both staff and students to thrive. Let's give her a round of applause. And now for our final Highland Pacific Elementary Honoree, Tracy Ross. Tracy has been a cornerstone of Highland Pacific for more than 24 years. As the multi-tiered system of support teacher on special assignment, Tracy ensures students receive high-quality research-based interventions. Her deep care and emotional investment in student success make her invaluable. Tracy's passion, experience, and dedication help our entire community thrive. She deserves another round of applause. Thank you, audience, for honoring the students, volunteers, and staff from Highland Pacific Elementary School, and thank you, honorees, for returning to your seats. Now, let's keep that energy going by giving a big round of applause as we prepare to welcome the Newmark Elementary School Knights and Principal Dr. Emily Ledesma. Audience, please put your hands together for Marco Espericueta. Michael is a third grader in Michael Moore's class. Marco excels in both math and English with his writing talent standing out. He expresses his thoughts with clarity, creativity, and confidence, well beyond his grade level. But what truly makes him the most remarkable student is that he's a kind and thoughtful classmate who is always willing to help others and displays respect and responsibility for all. We know Marco's future holds endless possibilities. Congratulations, Marco. Now, let's cheer on Emily Rose Hernandez as she makes her way forward. Emily Rose is a sixth grader in Jennifer Alvalero's class. She consistently goes above and beyond to support her classmates and teachers, whether it's offering a helping hand, a kind word, or simply leading by example, she demonstrates compassion, respect, and responsibility in all that she does. Her kind spirit is truly contagious, and she has a positive impact on everyone around her. She helps make her school a more welcoming and uplifting place. Thank you, Emily Rose. Audience, please help me welcome our next honoree, custodian Victor Garcia Cardona. Victor is a true team player, always willing to lend a hand and working hard to ensure the Newmark campus shines. His pride in his work shows throughout the entire school, creating a clean and welcoming environment for all. We are incredibly grateful for his dedication, reliability, and the uplifting energy he brings to the Newmark community. Thank you, Victor, for all that you do. And now, our final Newmark honoree is Counselor Lilia Villalvasso. As the leader of the school's PBIS program, Lily organizes engaging assemblies that celebrate positive behavior, reinforce expectations, and build a sense of unity. She also champions student Now, let's cheer on Emily Rose Hernandez as she makes her way forward. Emily Rose is a 6th grader in Jennifer Alvalero's class. She consistently goes above and beyond to support her classmates and teachers. Whether it's offering a helping hand, a kind word, or simply leading by example, she demonstrates compassion, respect, and responsibility in all that she does. Her kind spirit is truly contagious, and she has a positive impact on everyone around her. She helps make her school a more welcoming and uplifting place. Thank you, Emily Rose. Audience, please help me welcome our next honoree, custodian Victor Garcia Cardona. Victor is a true team player, always willing to lend a hand and working hard to ensure the Newmark campus shines. His pride in his work shows throughout the entire school, creating a clean and welcoming environment for all. We are incredibly grateful for his dedication, reliability, and the uplifting energy he brings to the Newmark community. Thank you, Victor, for all that you do. And now, our final Newmark honoree is counselor Lilia Villalvasso. As the leader of the school's PBIS program, Lily organizes engaging assemblies that celebrate positive behavior, reinforce expectations, and build a sense of unity. She also champions student recognition through the Night of the Month program, honoring students who demonstrate Newmark's core values and set a powerful example for their peers. Under Lily's guidance, PBIS has become more than a framework. It's a culture of respect, responsibility, and pride that touches every corner of Newmark Elementary School. Let's give her another round of applause. Thank you for honoring our Newmark students, volunteers, and staff. Moving on, now it is my pleasure to welcome Richardson Prep High Middle School Principal Shannon Cavanas. Please help me welcome 8th grader Hazel Medina. Hazel is the daughter of Liliana Luna and Dante Medina. Are they in the audience? Oh, they're coming down with her. Will Hazel and her family join us? Hazel's drive for learning and perseverance make her an outstanding student. She takes every obstacle as an opportunity to show growth. She is reliable, helpful, optimistic, responsible, and respectful. She takes initiative to support her peers, and her encouraging attitude and character truly contribute to the culture at Richardson. Congratulations, Hazel. You make us all so very proud. Next, please put your hands together for 8th grader Santos Reyes Lopez. Santos was nominated by the 8th grade teaching team. Santos consistently demonstrates exceptional academic performance, maintaining top grades across all subjects. His teachers can all agree that his strong work ethic and commitment to excellence sets him apart as a top achiever in class. He also demonstrates exemplary citizenship, showing respect, responsibility, and maturity in all settings. Congratulations, Santos, for earning the respect of your teachers and your peers. Now, it's time to welcome outstanding parent Michelle Michelle Micky Alexander. Micky has been instrumental in growing a thriving African-American Parent Advisory Council at Richardson. Micky was the inspiration and vision for the school's annual AAPAC Awards Night. She also participated in schoolsite council, asking questions and advocating for the needs of teachers and students. We appreciate Micky's dedication to making Richardson Prep High Middle School shine. Let's give her a round of applause. Let's keep that energy going. Now, please help me welcome Secretary 3 Wendy Lopez. Wendy's professionalism and pride in her work shows with each interaction she has with parents, the community, staff, and students. Wendy goes above and beyond to ensure that Richardson Prep High Middle School is an exemplary institution of academic learning. She is a master at Tetris, making sure that all of the moving parts of the school work together for student achievement. Thank you, Wendy. Way to go, Wendy. Now, it's time to welcome music teacher and band director Peter Lamas. Peter is an exceptional music teacher and band director. This year, his advanced orchestra students earned unanimous superior ratings at the regional festival. Three orchestra students and one band student competed at the All-Southern Regional Competitions. One student competed at the Orchestra All-State Competition. In addition, Peter conducts the Richardson Jazz Band that performs at community events. His innovation and pride in our school and community shine in everything that Peter does. Let's give him a warm hand of applause. Let's give it up one more time for all of our outstanding Richardson Prep High Tigers. Our final Outstanding Achievement Award school is Pacific High School, home of the Pirates. Would Principal Dr. Natalie Raimundo please join us? Now, help me welcome High School Senior Perla Arias. Perla is a scholar leader who has made every effort to achieve excellence, no matter the circumstances. She is one of three valedictorians this year and a top biomedical pathway student. Perla completed 12 dual-enrollment college courses and will graduate with an impressive 430 high school credits and a 4.79 GPA. Next fall, Perla will be attending her dream school, Cornell University. And it is at Cornell University that Perla will prepare for a future in medicine. Her family, especially Patricia Arias and Ricardo Mejia, must be so proud. Our final outstanding student is senior Karim Valenzuela. Correction, Karime Valenzuela. Karime has been an active and engaged student, demonstrating leadership, academic excellence, and commitment to her community. She is part of the dual enrollment program where she has taken high school and college courses. Karime will graduate with 430 high school credits, all while maintaining a 3.64 GPA and serving as captain of the water polo and swim teams. Karime has made the honorable choice to enlist in the US Army. Based on her record, we know that she will make an exceptional soldier. Congratulations to Karime. Please give a warm welcome to outstanding parent Maria Garcia. Pacific High School thanks Maria for her support and involvement in the schoolsite council and English Learner Advisory Council, also known as ELAC. Maria has been an active participant in school programs and has been a parent advocate and leader. She has been instrumental in bringing new faces to both schoolsite council and ELAC. And she was a helpful partner in Pacific's community schools grant application. Maria, your continued support is very much appreciated. Congratulations. Audience, now please help me welcome our next honoree, Attendance Technician Elisa Alamea. Elisa consistently provides excellent customer service and approaches her work with a clear understanding of its impact on students. Her positive attitude, even when buried in attendance verifications, creates a welcoming office environment noted to visitors to Pacific. While school office staff don't always know students personally, Elisa greets them by name and makes them feel seen. She truly makes a difference at Pacific High School. Let's give her a round of applause. Congratulations, Elisa. And now, it's time to announce our final Outstanding Achievement Award honoree for this evening, and that is Head Counselor Greg Haynes. Greg is truly a vital part of the Pirate Team. He is a problem solver, not just a problem finder. He approaches the work in ways to continuously improve the Pacific team and results for students. He is always professional and provides excellent customer service. Greg has been instrumental in doubling the A-through-G rate at Pacific over the last six years, and he's not done yet. Let's give all of our Pacific Pirates another round of applause. Thank you, members of the Board, Superintendent, and Cabinet. Would you kindly return to your seats? And thank you to our gracious audience for showing your support of our fellow honorees. Sending a special thank you to the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra for supporting this evening's honorees. Students, please remember to pick up your yard sign from my team member Victoria Wood before you leave the community room. This concludes this evening's special presentations. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to Board President Myra Ceballos. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and again, congratulations. Let's give them one more round of applause. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and do 2.4, Resolution and Recognition of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. And I'll go ahead and ask Ms. Abanes if she would graciously read that for us.
Whereas is the right of every child, regardless of gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation, to access a free, public K-12 education? And whereas the district recognizes that all our students' families and our employees are valued members of the school community, regardless of their gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation? And whereas the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month is celebrated in June to honor the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Manhattan, which was a tipping point for the gay liberation movement in the United States and was originally intended to recognize the impact that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals had on history? And whereas the LGBTQIA+ youth are more likely to experience mental health issues, to drop out of school, and to attempt suicide than their non-LGBTQIA+ peers? And whereas the policy and programs that promote education awareness for the LGBTQIA+ issues can reduce incidents of harassment and bullying and create an environment where every student can feel comfortable embracing and expressing their sexual orientation and gender identity? And whereas every student, regardless of their gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation, or biological characteristics, deserves to receive a well-rounded education that meets all their academic, social, and emotional needs? And whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District is committed to creating a welcoming and safe environment for all LGBTQIA+ students, staff, families, and making our school community welcoming and safe to all. Therefore, it will be resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins others around the state and the nation in recognizing June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education urges all students, staff, and community members to respect and honor our diverse community and to build a culture of inclusivity and equity all year long.
Vote by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Ms. Abanes?
Aye.
Ms. Gallardo?
Aye.
Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Motion passed. We are going to go ahead and add the 2.5 that we added to the agenda, and it'll be the DLEC Annual Report. Can I have Mr. Acosta come forward?
Good evening, Board President Ceballos, Vice President Aviles Grande, Distinguished Board, Superintendent Ariano, and Cabinet. My name is Sex Acosta. I am the Director of the Secondary Multilingual Department. And one of the responsibilities with that particular job is supporting our DLEC Board. As you may or may not know, about a year ago, we had a new installation of new board members, and they've had a really, really successful year. And to tell you about that year, I'm gonna bring up the board members so they can share it themselves, and you can hear it firsthand. So first, I'd like to introduce our President Elizabeth Romero. Would you please stand? Our Vice President Yolanda Quintero. Our Secretary Consuelo Rubio. Our Secretary Consuelo Rubio. Our Parliamentarian Maricela Núñez. And someone very valuable to us, our advisor past president, Romi Gamino. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna invite Mrs. Romero to come up and start the show for us, and she'll tell you a little bit about the great year that they've had.
Buenas tardes, miembros del board, asistentes de superintenden, al superintenden, estudiantes, personas que están aquí presentes y las que están en vivo. Es un orgullo para mí presentar lo que trabajamos como equipo de DILAC, los grandes logros que pudimos hacer durante este nuestro primer año. Gracias por la confianza principalmente a los padres que nos eligieron como representantes y al distrito. Yo siempre les he mencionado a los padres y a cualquier persona que nos, este, me introducen. Muy humildemente, yo soy la amiga, mi Romero. Porque para mí esto es un legado que se va, pero yo me quedo con ustedes en mi comunidad porque para mí es muy importante y pongo siempre mi corazón en ustedes, en toda la comunidad, en los estudiantes. Y ustedes saben que lo hago siempre de corazón. Entonces, este, es nada más para mí un orgullo presentar todo lo que hemos logrado.
Good evening, Board. Student Board members, Assistant Superintendents, attendees in person and online. It is an honor to me to present to those who work as a team at the DILAC and all the big achievements that we've been able to make during these first years, thanks to the trust and mainly to the parents that chose us to follow our lead, calling me a friend, calling me, oh, Ms. Romero. This position that they entrusted me, it's getting to an end. Because of my love for all of you and my community always, I keep them in my heart. I am a friend, and I wanna continue this legacy. Thank you.
A continuación, les voy a presentar lo que, este, es nuestras tareas, requisitos anuales de DILAC. En California, el Comité Asesor de Aprendices de Inglés del Distrito DILAC tiene varias tareas legalmente requeridas que debe abandonar anualmente según el Código de Educación de California, sección 52, 176P, y otras regulaciones relacionadas. Estas responsabilidades aseguran que las necesidades de los estudiantes de aprendices de inglés estén representadas y que sus familias participen en la planificación educativa a nivel distrito. El DILAC debe asesorar a la Junta Directiva del Distrito Escolar al menos sobre lo siguiente. Número uno, desarrollo o revisión de un plan maestro del distrito para programas y servicios de educación para aprendices de inglés que tenga en cuenta los planes maestros de los sitios escolares. Esto fue completado en septiembre de 2024. Número dos, realización de una evaluación de necesidades a nivel del distrito en cada escuela. Esto fue completado mayo de 2025. Establecimiento de metas y objetivos del distrito para los programas y servicios de aprendices de inglés también completado en julio 2024. Desarrollo de un plan para asegurar el cumplimiento de los requisitos aplicables para maestros, asistentes de instrucción, por ejemplo, calificaciones para apoyar a los ILS completado en noviembre de 2024. Pasar de aprendices de inglés a proficientes de inglés fluido completado en diciembre 2024. Revisión y comentarios sobre las notificaciones escritas que deben enviarse a los padres y tutores completado en septiembre 2024. Revisión y comentarios sobre el plan local del control y responsabilidades ELCAP por sus siglas en inglés especialmente sobre cómo abordar los servicios para los aprendices de inglés completado en octubre de 2024.
Now I will proceed to read in English. Now I will present our responsibilities. In California, the District English Learner Advisory Committee, DILAC, has several legally required tasks it must address annually. According to the California Education Code EC Section 52176B and other related regulations, these responsibilities ensure that English learner students need, English learner student needs are represented and that their families are engaged in educational planning at a district level. A DILAC must advise the school, district, governing board on at least the following: development or revision of a district master plan for education programs and services for English learners, which takes into consideration the school site's master plans. This was completed in September 2024. Conducting, number two, conducting a district-wide needs assessment on a school-by-school basis. This was completed in May 2025. Number three, establishment of district goals and objectives for programs and services for English learners. This was completed in July 2024. Number four, development of a plan to ensure compliance with any applicable teacher and instructional aid requirements, for example, qualifications to support ELS. This was completed in November 2024. Number five, review and comment on the district's reclassification procedures. For example, moving students from EL to fluent English proficient. And this was completed in December 2024. Review and comment, number six, review and comment on the written notifications required to be sent to parents and guardians. This was completed in September 2024. And number seven, review and comment on the local control and accountability plan ELCAP, especially how it addresses services for English learners. And this was completed in October 2024.
Ahora voy a llamar a Yolanda Quintero, nuestra vicepresidenta. Ella continuará con el reporte.
Now, Yolanda Quintero, our Vice President, will continue with the report.
Hi, Board members and Superintendent, Assistant, Mr. Ariano. I'm continuing in Spanish. Responsabilidades adicionales. Número uno, capacitación. Los distritos deberán proporcionar a los miembros de DILAC capacitación adecuada y materiales que les permitan llevar a cabo sus responsabilidades legales de manera efectiva. Completado en julio del 2024. Número dos, composición. Si hay 51 más estudiantes-aprendices de inglés en un distrito, se debe formar un DILAC. El comité deberá estar compuesto por padres o tutores de estudiantes-aprendices de inglés, y la mayoría deberá ser de padres-aprendices de inglés que no estén empleados por el distrito de tiempo completo. Completado según lo acordado por el DILAC existente.
Hello, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendents, and Board members. I'm now gonna continue in Spanish. Training, number one, training. Districts are required to provide DILAC members with appropriate training and materials to enable them to carry out their legal responsibilities effectively. This was completed in July 2024. Number two, composition. If there are 51 or more English learner students in a district, a DILAC must be formed. The committee must be made up of parents or guardians of ELS, and the majority must be EL parents not employed by the district. Completed as evidenced by existing DILAC.
Les cedo la palabra a la Secretaria Consuelo Rubio.
Now.
Gracias.
Now, Consuelo Rubio will take this word.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos.
Good evening, everybody.
El trabajo de DILAC 2024-2025. Las voces de los representantes de ELAC en los sitios. Se comenzaron a establecer reuniones con los representantes de ELAC en los sitios para tener una comunicación más abierta y un diálogo bidireccional. Hubo tres reuniones. Número dos, búsqueda de orientación del CDE. Se reunió con el estado para recibir asesoramiento legal sobre las acciones propuestas. Número tres, modificación de los estatutos. Se utilizó un proceso abierto, transparente, e inclusivo para actualizar y modificar los estatutos. Número cuatro, presentación del consulado mexicano. Se compartieron los recursos ofrecidos por sus oficinas a los padres del Distrito Escolar de San Bernardino. Número cinco, asistencia a conferencias. Se envió a varios representantes de ELAC y padres a capacitaciones, Cave en Long Beach, Cave Regional in Riverside, La Cosecha, etc., para entrenamientos relacionados con los aprendices de inglés.
Okay, the DILAC work, year 2024-2025, the voices of ELAC site representatives, began establishing meetings with ELAC site representatives in order to have a more open two-way communication and dialogue. We had three meetings. Number two, seeking guidance from CDE. We met with the state to get legal advice on proposed actions. Number three, modify bylaws. We use an open, transparent, inclusive process to update and modify bylaws. Number four, Mexican consulate presented the shared resources offered by their offices to SBCUSD parents. Number five, attended conferences. We send many ELAC representatives and parents to trainings such as Cave in Long Beach, Cave Regional in Riverside, La Cosecha, etc., for parent trainings related to English learners.
Ahora cedo la palabra a nuestra consejera Rodolfin Agamino. Gracias.
Now, our advisor Rodolfin Agamino will continue.
Buenas tardes. Punto número seis, información sistemática compartida con el público. Notificaciones de reuniones en la página web del departamento. Parent Square, llamadas recordatorias. Publicación de las actas de todas las reuniones pasadas. Grabación de todas las reuniones DILAC y publicación en la página web. Punto número siete, celebraciones culturales antes de las reuniones fueron introducidas. Punto número ocho, servicios de traducción vietnamita en las reuniones fueron introducidos. Punto número nueve, apoyo DILAC en las escuelas para fortalecer los ELAC. Inciso a Bradley, Shandill Hills, Cajon, Curtis, Anton, Bing One, Vermont, Arroyo Valley, Golden Valley, Col, Arrow View. Inciso número B, aumento de representantes de ELAC de 19 en el año 2024 a 64 en el año 24-25. Punto número diez, café de padres. Reunión continua para que los padres compartan sus preocupaciones. Gracias. Cedo la palabra a la presidenta.
Okay, good evening. Number six, systematize information sharing with the public. Department webpage meeting notification, Parent Square reminder calls, posted minutes of all past meetings, recorded all DILAC meetings and posted on website. Number seven, cultural celebrations prior to meetings were introduced. Number eight, Vietnamese translation services at meetings were introduced. Number nine, DILAC support at schools to build ELACs at Bradley, Shandill Hills, Cajon, Curtis, Anton, Bing One, Vermont, Arroyo Valley, Col and Valley, Col and Arrow View. And B, ELAC reps were increased from 19 in year 23-24 to 64 in year 24-25. Number 10, café de padres, coffee with parents, ongoing meeting for parents to share concerns. And now, Ms. Romero will continue the presentation.
Gracias. Seguimos con el trabajo que continúa en 2025-2026, próximos pasos. Número uno, realizar reuniones con los representantes de ELAC cada dos meses durante el año escolar 25-26 para abordar temas relevantes. Y aquí me gustaría enfocar que esto se está haciendo por primera vez. Nunca se había hecho. So hoy es por primera vez. Número dos, introducir interpretación en lengua de señas, en sign language, en las reuniones de DILAC. Número tres, crear videos de capacitación para el ELAC o los ELAC como guía elaborada por los oficiales de DILAC. En sección A, subidos a Parent Square. Sección B, distribuidos a todos los sitios escolares. Número cuatro, realizar capacitaciones presenciales para padres sobre la formación de los ELACs. Sección A, brindar orientación general para las elecciones de ELAC en los sitios escolares. Número cinco, aumentar la concientización de los padres sobre las opciones de programas multilingües durante el proceso de inscripción en el Distrito de San Bernardino. Número seis, continuar brindando apoyo a las escuelas según las solicitudes que realicen. Número siete, proveer una mayor representación visual de los representantes de ELAC por escuelas para promover el reconocimiento entre los padres. Número ocho, continuar reconociendo a los padres por su asistencia a las reuniones de DILAC. Y número nueve, distribuir los estatutos del DILAC a todas las escuelas junto con un calendario anual de actividades de DILAC. Y pues...
The work continues in year 25-26, next steps. Number one, hold meetings with ELAC reps every two months during the year 25-26 school year to address. This is the first time that we're doing this because it has never been done before. Number two, introduce the sign language interpretation at DILAC meetings. Number three, create ELAC training videos for guidance by ELAC officers. Section A, upload it to Parent Square, and section B, distribute to all sites. Number four, ELAC establishment in person, ELAC establishment of in-person trainings for parents. Section A, provide general guidance for site ELAC elections. Number five, increase multilingual program options and awareness for parents during registration to the SBCUSD. Number six, continue to support schools as needed based on school requests. Number seven, more visual representation of site ELAC reps for parent awareness. Number eight, continue to recognize parents for attending DILAC meetings. Number nine, distribute ELAC bylaws to all schools and ELAC annual calendar activities.
Ahora me gustaría enfocarme en algunos puntos. El primero fue que este, por primera vez, se introdució el idioma vietnamiz. Después, por primera vez, vamos a traer sign language. También, por primera vez, se renovaron las bailas porque estaba, no se habían renovado desde el 2012. Entonces, este, ya ahorita están actualizadas, 2024.
Now I'd like to focus on certain key points. It's the first time that we introduced the Vietnamese language, and it's the first time that we want to introduce sign language, and it's the first time since 2012 that we are reviewing the bylaws to be updated in the U.S. and it's the first time since 2012 that we are reviewing the bylaws to be updated in the year 25-26.
Y como les dije, la, por primera vez, reuniones con los representantes de cada escuela y hemos tenido mucho éxito.
And as I stated, the first time we have met with the school site reps and we have had great success.
Y también quiero agradecer a todo el equipo, ya que hemos trabajado muy duro. Reconocerlas también porque han tomado mucho de su tiempo. Tiempo para esto de bailas, de las bailas, nos tomaron mucho tiempo. A veces estamos en bibliotecas, en los malls, en diferentes lados, trabajando muy duro y se logró. Y para nosotros es un gran logro porque en verdad tuvimos todo el apoyo de varios representantes de la escuela.
I also want to thank all the team because they work hard in reviewing these bylaws. There were times that we met at libraries, malls, and we worked very hard with all the support of the school reps.
Y pues, yo como soy un padre visual, ahora les quiero presentar un video que está resumido básicamente todo lo que hemos hecho. Este, gracias a señora Costa, a Alma Fuentes y a la señorita Luera. Ella también me ayudaron mucho para lograr esto, para que ustedes vean visualmente todo lo que hemos logrado y ojalá ahí les guste.
And now, as I am a visual parent, I would like to show you a video of all our work and thanks to Alma Fuentes, Mrs. Luera, and all the people that contributed for this video.
Bonjour, bienvenue à la cérémonie de reclassification de SBCUSD. Merci de vous, je voudrais nous pour saluer cette grande réussite. Nous espérons que vous appréciez le moment d'aujourd'hui qui célèbre le mongolisme, l'écrition.
¿Cómo está? Malagueña el llegado al cérémonio de reclassificación de SBCUSD. Muchas gracias por acompañarnos en el recorrido de estos largos caminos. Now, why enjoy yourselves in the day of celebration today? That we are giving a big hug to the multilinguality, we have helped you.
Moro imawaya ku SBCUSD reclassification ceremony. Chinotenda, ne kuti jwena ku pembe ra ku.
Creo que se equivocaron.
Chinowimba, munoti.
I'll give you a portion of the wrong video.
Ne kuti, ne shiti gochanasi. Chinopembe ra ku gonan, ma itiro akawanda.
So if we can just kind of pause that and then maybe you can search for it in the meantime. I'm gonna go ahead and, I don't know if you're done, but I know Mr. Tillman has a comment.
Yeah, ya acabamos, sí, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I'm done.
Ms. Romero, so how many students have you had, have attended our schools? How many of your kids?
Mine?
Yeah, how many kids did you have?
Six.
And...
One especially, two.
Okay, and how many are still in school right now?
Right now, one.
Okay, and what school do they attend?
Cajon.
Okay, and the ones that graduated, what are they doing now?
Next year.
No, the ones that graduated, did they go?
Oh, when? Oh, oh my God. Oh, one of my, they are working. One of my kids work in the district and the other one, he lives in Las Vegas and he graduated for AC and different things. They are working so hard.
Oh, good, good. I know a lot of them, they're very successful and you've been with the district and DILAC for how many years?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years, yes.
So I want to thank you for your service. You've been coming here for so many years, not only helping your own children but so many other children, so I really do appreciate you and all the members of DILAC and ILLAC. Because I've been to the meetings, there'll be fifty people, sixty people in your meetings during the middle of the day. So I really do appreciate the work that you all do to volunteer, not only to help your own children, but all the other kids. You are yourself a success story, so I want to thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You know, my heart is with the community.
Yeah. So I'll also chime in, quiero darle las gracias también. You know, I wanted to say thank you as well. Yo sé que todo el trabajo que hacen no es fácil. Este, I know that the work that you do is not easy. Yes, it's from the heart and sometimes it's a lot of hours that, you know, you put in and I've been a witness to those hours on your own time. So I just want to say thank you so much, not just yourself, for, you know, like Mr. Tillman said, you've been in the district for so long. Also, I know Ms. Gaminu has been, you know, in the district for a long time as well, supporting her own children but also, you know, the other children in our community, right, that need our help and that you're contributing to raising and bringing forward new parents also that need to be involved and that need to learn how to navigate. And so I really, really, really thank you for all of the work that you guys are doing. So muchísimas gracias por todo el trabajo que hacen. Ya saben que cuando yo puedo ahí estoy presente.
Sí, y me gusta mencionar siempre que mis compañeras siempre han estado muy activas conmigo y entonces yo soy más que, me gustaría que ellas estuvieran aquí. Vénganse, vénganse, vénganse para que las vean y que, porque en verdad ha sido un grupo muy trabajador.
Si pasen para adelante para reconocerlas y darles un aplauso.
I like always to mention the other members of my team who have been very supportive and part of all this work.
Quisieran dar unas palabras, o no? Alguien, sí, alguien.
Pues yo solo quiero decir que estoy muy orgullosa de mi distrito porque sé todo el trabajo que también ustedes hacen, lo que se esfuerzan para el éxito académico de nuestros estudiantes y... Gracias. Que tengan muy bonito, muy bonita semana. Ya les iba a decir buen fin de semana pero todavía no.
So I'd like to say that I'm very proud of my district. I know that all the work that you do is for the success of our students and thank you for everything that you do.
Pues, no quisieron hablar ellas, son más... Pero ya un día, ojalá ahí estén aquí también.
La próxima presidenta, the next president.
Sí, verdad, porque sí es algo muy bonito pero también es un compromiso muy grande, entonces pues gracias. Ah, no sé si ya encontramos el video, no? Ah, pero se los prometo que la traemos porque está muy bonito. Sí, sí, para que lo vean porque de verdad sí fue un gran trabajo y no pensé que iba a pasar esto. Ya ves, estamos en vivo.
Yeah, we'll make sure we get the video and we'll send it to all of you. It's a very nice video and I would like you, for all of you to see it.
Sí, pues muchas gracias por el tiempo y gracias por confiar en el equipo.
We look forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time and for your trust in our team.
All right. Next up is 4.0 public hearing. 4.1 public hearing for San Bernardino School Police Officers Association Initial Contract Proposal, successor to the San Bernardino City Unified School District Human Resources. I will now open the public hearing for the San Bernardino School Police Officers Association Initial Contract Proposal. President Savios.
Yes, did I skip?
Public comments.
Thank you so, I'm getting ahead of myself. Oh my goodness, okay, I take all of that back. 3.0 public comments, 3.1 received public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdictions such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. The public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than thirty minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments were made at a public meeting. So up first, I will call Ms. Christina Marquez.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, student board members, cabinet, board president Savios and superintendent Ariano. I'm here tonight to speak about the wonderful Humane Society of the San Bernardino Valley and how they've had such a positive relationship with our students and especially our district for the past two decades. They have come into our classrooms to teach empathy, conservation, environment, community, compassion, and how animals assist humans in various capacities. The Humane Society also holds some fundraising events such as Night at the Ontario Rain, their Halloween party, Paint Your Pet with Purple Easel, Baseball Wagon Wednesday on August 20th with the 66ers, Blessing of the Animals, and my favorite Santa Paz. But during the summer, they also offer what's known as Critter Camp, where for a nominal fee, students entering second through sixth grade can participate in a week-long day camp from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And they have two different sessions. The first session is from June 16th through the 20th and the second session is from July 7th through the 11th. During these camps, students learn about animal adaptations, how habitat and environment impact animals, food webs, different biomes that we live in, the ecology. And sometimes students even get to meet some live animals like snakes, possums, service dogs, tortoises, llamas, miniature ponies, tarantulas. And one year, I even met a serval cat who could jump from a dead stop about six feet up and they come from the Sahara Desert. So it's a better understanding, it gives a better understanding to our students of wild and domestic animals. At Critter Camp, students are making and taking projects home to share with their families. And I would like to add that I have, myself, in the past, volunteered to work with students who had attended Critter Camp. Now, let me give the disclaimer. SBCUSD does not provide any funding, nor does any other district in the area to my knowledge. And I've been hoping to see these flyers come across so that I could pass them out to students, but haven't seen anything. I actually pulled this one off of the Humane Society's website. Now, if anybody wants further information, they can call the Humane Society at 909-386-1400, extension 218, or they can go to their website at www.hssbv.org/upcomingevents. Thank you very much. Now I have to go take care of some prep work. Superintendent, have a good evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Marquez. Up next, Mr. Cañez.
Good evening, Mad Board President Savios. Good evening, Madam Vice President Aviles Grande, distinguished board members, superintendent Ariano and staff. My name is Ernesto Cañez and I am the very proud principal of King Middle School. Today, the King family is here to present you with gifts. We have polishers that display our new mascot for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Middle School. After several surveys were sent out to the community of King Middle School, for our staff, for our students, our families, we are proud to share with the board tonight that we will be known as the King Middle School Cobra starting 25-26. In collaboration with our community, student body and staff, King Middle School rebranded in an effort to change the climate, the culture, and the perception of our school. With respect to the King Middle School faculty and staff of the past, we recognize a need to rebrand our school to include a new mascot, a new king mission and vision that we're here to present you today. ASV scholar Kalen Davis will present the board with our new king mission that will guide our staff.
Good evening, board.
Okay, I got it. Good evening, board. Our new king mission is to... Is to foster a culture of academic excellence by instilling consistency, purpose, and rigor in every classroom. We empower students with the life skills, knowledge, and mindset to be successful in high school, college, and beyond.
ASV president Chris Martinez will present the board with a new king vision, which including student voice and input. A survey was sent out to all 600 King scholars requesting that they share with us what values that they want the adults on our campus to exhibit at all times.
Good evening, school boarder. Today, I will read our new king vision. The staff and scholars of King... The staff and scholars at King will cultivate a supportive environment and compassion, respect and integrity, ensure that every student feels safe, valued, and that we can, wanted, as we collectively strive for academic excellence.
On behalf of the King community in the west side, we ask that the board recognize the King Middle School Cobras, our new mission and our vision statements. We appreciate the board's constant support for our scholars and the energy it takes to lead this amazing district. Thank you.
Mr. Tillman, hold on one second.
Presenters, you guys both did a great job. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And to the other students, you guys had great energy. I love your vibe. I tell you guys really do like your school. I'm from the west side of San Bernardino. I used to play football on the field there on the weekends for many years when I was growing up. So if anything I can do to support King, make sure you guys let me know, okay? And congratulations.
Ms. Abaliz Grande.
Gosh, you guys just look really, really great. I love it and I love this shirt and thank you so much for it. Martin Luther King was the very, very, very first school I ever was, I taught at and I came to work, I was a substitute and it was my very first assignment. And it was the first day I went and it was 9/11. So, you know, I always remember where I am and I'll never forget, I think, was, what was his name? Was it captain of the, some kind of military ROTC, Danny? Who is it that's the captain of some ROTC program at Martin Luther King? Remember 9/11? And he led us, that day, he led us teachers in a prayer around the flag. So here we were on my first day and there was, the Filipino teachers were there and it was just a wonderful, like a very special day for me already and then for that to happen and it was a spiritual experience. So I have a warm heart, a spot in my heart always for Martin Luther King. I really, I'm so grateful for you and your leadership and you have history there. It's wonderful. Thank you. I honor you.
So I also want to share a couple words myself. I am so very excited to see you guys here and, you know, with a rebranding and new logo and everything, like I can feel the excitement. Like Mr. Tillman said, I myself am from the west side. I actually attended King Middle School myself when I was in middle school and as Ms. Grande has mentioned, she was subbing during the 9/11. Actually, I was in my social studies class. And when 9/11 happened, I can't remember the name of my teacher now, but she immediately turned on the TV that she had there and we were, you know, it was a lesson and we were in social studies. So I'm very familiar with the campus. My parents still live on that side of town. My siblings still live there. We all went through, you know, King and then some of you are going to be probably going to Arroyo Valley, which is, you know, where we eventually ended up going as well. So I'm really, really excited. Please, whatever we can do as a board to support as well, thank you so much. I know that, you know, you're doing great things over there with your team and so keep up that energy and keep up the, you know, the great work that you guys do as the students. Who knows, one day you might be board president, so...
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That's right.
All right, up next, we have Goss? Is it Currys? Curtis?
Can you hear me? Okay, yes, Curtis Goss. My name is Curtis Goss. I'm a professor at San Bernardino Valley College in a kinesiology department. The reason that I'm here, I guess I can give you a little background. In 1984, they held Olympic Games in Los Angeles, and they made millions and millions and millions of dollars. And what they decided to do, one of the mandates, was to give back to the community. For years and years and years, Mount San Antonio College was the marker for that. Well, Mount SAC gave it up, and recently in March, we took over at San Bernardino Valley College. And so we're earmarked to work with youth from third grade all the way up to middle school, eighth grade. They provided a grant, this year is our first grant, and they usually wrapped it up at about $125,000, where we can work with 10,000, I mean with about 1,000 kids, 20 clinics, Learn by Doing, where we can come into your schools, or we can bring them up to the college and work with them. Some of the, part of the program that is mandated by LA 84, we want to promote physical health and wellbeing, make sure that is for life, not just something we go through. We want to develop essential skills such as teamwork, discipline, resiliency, those type of things. We want to learn, the kids to learn, to enhance their self-esteem. So these are, this is the program that we have going now. It'll be going from, it started this March. Right now, we are putting our staff together. We decided we would use a lot of coaches from the area. We have a coach on from Pacific High School, from Cajon High School, we're bringing in San Bernardino Valley, San Bernardino High School, we're bringing in a coach to teach these clinics. So we have this program, and we just wanted the school district to know about it and get it out to the schools and say, hey, we're here, and I know people kind of Larry every time they hear free, but it is free, you know, no cost to the district. It is provided by LA 84. It's a fantastic program. Like I said, I worked at Mount SAC for 27 years, and I ran the program over there. So now I'm here at Valley, and we put in a bid, and we won, so it's here. So just want you to know.
Awesome. Mr. Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Alexander?
I just had a, thank you, Mr. Goss, for coming and giving us that update. So are you currently working with specific schools, and would you like to work with our district to be able to get the message out more?
Yes, we haven't, we, we're going to do a test school in about, in about two months, but we want to get the message out to the district to say, hey, you know what? The program's here. We even have, I can't make promises on this, but we may have funds within there to say, hey, if you can't afford transportation to the college, we'll help with that. But we're still working that part of it out.
Okay, so we need to table that and put together a strategy. I know Danny's about to talk.
For sure, and I know that Mr. Ariano has taken your information down, so we will be reaching out, Mr. Tillman.
And maybe some of the specific sessions that you have, maybe we can advertise it on our parent square. You say you were at Mount SAC, do you know Carolyn Freeman? She was a professor there?
How long ago?
I think she's still there, but she's from San Bernardino.
Yeah, no, I was there a while ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
Well, thank you very much. We love to partner with you.
Yeah, looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Awesome. Up next, we have Brenda Freshwater?
Good evening. My name is Brenda Freshwater. I'm a program specialist with Student Wellness and Support Services, and I'm here to say thank you. For three consecutive years, your dedicated support has empowered us to create a vital space for our LGBTQIA+ students and families. This year, our annual pride event on May 17th was another resounding success, and we have you to thank. In today's national climate, where inclusion and visibility are often under attack, it takes real courage to lead with empathy, equity, and conviction. Thank you to Mr. Ariano, to Dr. Funches, and to Ms. Abaliz Grande for attending and delivering powerful messages that echoed our theme, "You are enough." Your words mattered, your presence mattered, and our students and families felt it. The event was truly a collaborative effort across departments, and we are grateful to everyone who made it possible. Thank you to school police for keeping us physically safe throughout the event, to our maintenance and operations team for setting up a beautiful and welcoming space, to the communications team that helped make sure our message reached the wider community and helped us look good doing it. We also want to acknowledge the important contributions of other district departments. The SBCUSD school nurses shared resources and information about the wellness services available at our schools, helping families understand where and how to access support. Our family engagement team created a warm, inclusive atmosphere that made everyone feel welcome, and the STEAM department provided beautiful commemorative tags that students wore proudly throughout the event. Special thanks to Colleen Williams, Director of Student Wellness and Support Services, for her leadership and dedication in coordinating this meaningful event with care and purpose. Most of all, we want to celebrate our students, their joy, their courage, and their brilliance. This year's "You Are Enough" art contest invited students to express their experiences and identities, and the results were powerful. Their artwork reflected strength, vulnerability, and hope. It was a reminder of why spaces like this are so important and why visibility matters. Photos from the event along with the student artwork submitted for the contest can be viewed on our webpage. I encourage you to take a look. It's a beautiful reflection of what our community can create when we come together in support of students. Looking ahead, we hope the board will continue to champion this work by encouraging all secondary schools to establish GSA clubs. These spaces give students a voice, a community, and the opportunity to lead. We also ask that you continue to use your platforms to promote upcoming events like this one. When board members speak about these events and show up for them, it signals to students that they are valued and supported, not just in words, but in action. Thank you again for your courageous leadership and for showing our students in both word and deed that they are enough.
Thank you so much. And thank you all for that event. I know some of us couldn't attend, but Ms. Abaliz Grande represented as well there. Awesome. Mr. Tillman?
Yeah, I want to thank you for your work, and we really do appreciate you. I normally attend, it was my birthday that day, so I didn't, but I want to also thank, I know our student board member, Ms. Rosa Bloom was there because I saw pictures of her, so I want to thank her for representing us also. Thank you.
Ms. Medina, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, I did, and I regret not being there. I signed up to be a delegate for the California School Boards Association. I definitely don't want to miss next year, and I would love to try to see if there's a possibility of maybe what those dates may look like for next year so I can better prepare way in advance, especially since now I signed up for the delegate. But I am really excited, you know, this is, we are ahead of the game, and, you know, just showing what compassion looks like in our region. It really does. And while others are trying to dismantle, we are trying to uplift, and I'm really proud of our staff. I'm really proud of our board members, of our superintendent, of our district, of our students, every single one, because we have only shown love, and we have shown acceptance, respect, and I'm just, I'm just really excited. I'm really proud. And it's also in, in the face of areas where it's not necessarily happening across the board in other districts, and so we're setting an example, and I'm really proud of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Ms. Abaliz Grande?
Well, it was an amazing and incredible event, and I'm going to be, start going like more often. It was actually, I think, the first one, I was always too busy with another event, but this year I made, I made sure I made it a priority in my busy schedule. And so I was very moved because she's, you said something to me as I left, and you thanked me for my words, and you said, "I just can't help but think if our children had, you know, heard those words before, and what a difference it would have made in so many lives," you know. And I remember thinking, I was a single parent for over half my life, and our home was often the place where we had children, and my daughter grew up with that acceptance in our home, so I'm very proud of that. And at that time, it was MySpace where they had, and they met, and they'd come over, and they did makeup parties and dress up, and she told me, "Mom, you know, I'm very popular." So one time, this one fellow came up and said, "Are you Gabba from MySpace?" And she said, "Yes, yes, I am." And she's, so it was a camaraderie that, to me, I accepted it a long time ago, and so I felt good. I felt proud about that. So, and I'm proud of all of you, and I'm proud of us. I'm proud of our school district. We were at the forefront of that. We truly were. So I honor you and bless you and love you and keep you.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Up next, we have Ms. Reyna Medina?
Hello. Good evening, board members and staff. My name is Reyna Medina. I work at Emino, and I'm in here because we had an investigation, and we didn't, we're not happy with the results. So in here, on behalf of everybody, I'm in here to request, we would like to request for the official investigation, so that's what I'm here representing everybody, because we would like to see the real, the original, the official papers, so we can proceed from there with the legal litigations. So that's what I'm here. I know that we've been working with this and with you for so many years. It's already four years, so I think we already did everything from our part to help everyone and to work together so we can, we can work at things, but unfortunately, it hasn't, we haven't got any results. So that's why we, that's why we're here, because we need those papers so we can proceed from there. And that's all I have to say. So I'm talking on behalf of everybody. It's not only at Emino that we're having issues, it's throughout the whole district, so it's in different sites, but some of them, they're kind of scared to come and talk and tell you about the issues that they're having, but, so that's what I'm here to talk on behalf of everybody, that they're scared, because they're scared of retaliation. I don't know. I'm not scared, so I'm here to let you guys know of all these things that it's been going on. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to 4.0 public hearing, 4.1 public hearing. Public hearing for San Bernardino School Police Officers Association's initial contract proposal successor to the San Bernardino City Unified School District. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any public comments? There are not. All right, so at this time, I will now close the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I motion that we accept.
Nice. Got a second?
Second.
Move by Ms. Alexander, second by Mr. Tillman. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none, let's vote. Ms. Grande? Motion carries. 5.0 closed session, 5.1 closed session, public comments. Do we have any? There are none? Okay, 5.2 closed session. Admit. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. 6.0 action reported from closed session, 6.1 consideration adoption of resolution implementing elimination layoffs, layoff and/or reduction in service of classified positions?
Vote.
Move by Mr. Tillman, second by Mr. Santos. Vote, please.
Aye, Abigail, say aye.
Thank you, Abigail. Motion passed, 6.2 other closed session action. And I don't believe there is any other closed session action. 7.0 student board members, 7.1 reports of comments. I'll go ahead and start with Ms. Gallardo.
Thank you, President Salvajos. Good evening, everyone. I am Fernanda Gallardo, and I have been a student board member for one year.
Awesome. Did you want me to come back? Yeah, okay. Ms. Abeniz?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Patience Abeniz, and I am representing Middle College High School. I want to express my gratitude to the class of 2025, and I'm deeply honored to be graduating with such elite students. A notable event that took place at Middle College High School was our field day this past Friday, where we had friendly competitions between each grade. I want to also say thank you to all the classified staff, as it is Classified Staff Appreciation Week. To highlight other schools, Cajon High School's Film Society is hosting a Green Door Film Festival on Saturday, May 24th. At Pacific High School, they are hosting a parent STEAM night on Friday, May 23rd. At SLAC, our 2025-2026 student board members were selected, and I can't wait, I can't wait for you all to meet them. Thank you to the San Bernardino City Unified School District for having me these past 13 years. It's been a glorious journey. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Abeniz. Ms. Gallardo?
Hello, my name is Fernanda Gallardo. I am a senior who represents a Royal Valley High School. As the end to my high school journey approaches, so does my journey of being a student board member. I want to thank the district for this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and for believing in me and my potential. Also, thank you to my fellow students for trusting in me as their student board member and giving me the opportunity to represent them and their voice. At a Royal Valley High School, we will be hosting our ninth-grade orientation tomorrow to welcome our incoming freshmen. For our seniors, we will have two different ceremonies this week. On Thursday, we will be hosting our Seal of Bile literacy ceremony, where seniors will receive their certificate and a court for completing three to four years of a foreign language. And on Friday, we will have And on Friday, we will have our academic awards and scholarship ceremony to celebrate all their accomplishments of our seniors. Jimena Preciado, the representative of San G, reported that currently at San G, many students have officially committed to their colleges and universities. She highlights the instrumental role counselors at her school have played in guiding seniors through college and career readiness. Additionally, Jimena, Wilberth, and Sasha, fellow other student board members, they had the opportunity to visit Urbida Elementary School to connect, sorry, with younger students and help empower future generations of student board members. At our last Slack meeting, our new student board members were elected and I want to congratulate them for such an accomplishment and I can't wait for them to experience these, experience this new chapter filled with opportunities, responsibilities, and memorable experiences. As this is my last board meeting as a student board member, sitting up on the dais, I want to once again thank all of you for allowing me to be here and giving me an opportunity to have my voice heard. Although I will be entering a new chapter in my life, I will always come back to my community and give back to the same community that nurtured my goals and aspirations. Thank you.
We definitely appreciate you both and congratulate you because I know you will be graduating and moving on to bigger, better things. So as I said this past week, come back and let us know what you guys are doing. Awesome. 8.0 administrative reports and presentations, 8.1 special education presentation. I'll go ahead and hand it over to Ms. Applegate, Mrs. Applegate.
Thank you, Madam President Cervajos, Vice President Abilas Grande, Board, our Superintendent, Mr. Arriano, Cabinet, and our viewers out there. I am extremely, extremely proud to bring you this presentation. It's been a long time coming. I think through this presentation, it is a comprehensive presentation, so I will give you that. But I think you're going to see really to the extent of the commitment that SBCUSD has to its special education students. Board, you've always been visionary and I want to thank you for allowing me to have special education. I know Dr. Rubio will mention a little bit later. But as you know, you advocated and helped me bring special education over to educational services. And I think now, having initial instruction along with special education has really been something that has really been fruitful for our students and provided so many services that you're about to see. But this team here, I got to tell you, all these people here are such dedicated individuals with huge hearts. And I think you're going to be very proud to see the work that's being done by our district. So without further ado, I'd like to present our director, Dr. Ryan Rubio, and he has all of his team here as well. So we can give them a nice, warm welcome.
Let me get situated so I can be set up to speak to you all. Board President Cervajos, Vice President Abilas Grande, Superintendent, Board Members, Student Board Members, Cabinet. I am so thankful and for this opportunity and humbled for this opportunity to present this information to you regarding our our program and just how we support students and families in our San Bernardino City Unified School District. And so right now, we are one week away from my one-year anniversary, being able to take this position to humbly serve not just the colleagues behind me, but the ones that are watching online, all of our families and anybody in our community that's watching this. So I have been gracious to support them and I'm thankful for that opportunity. And so we have a lot of information for you. And a lot of it you you may know and a lot of it may be new. And so I just want to make sure that you have the information. And I will have stopping points throughout the presentation to answer any questions and make sure that you have what you need in terms of what we're doing. So here's just an overview of what we are looking at, going to be providing and I'm going to be sharing with you tonight. When it comes to a department as large as ours, you never want to have one voice be the representative of making decisions about admission or vision. And recently, we went through this process to get prepared for the 25-26 school year. And so my colleagues behind me in the department, we went through a process and we were looking at what what represents us? What do we know of what we want for the work that we do and where do we want our students to go? So you have this information, but we did go through collectively and make sure that you that we went through and got everybody's input. Here's a summary of our initiatives. And really, I want to just kind of focus on the fact that we have three areas at the top. You see, our initiatives really center around academic growth, behavior, and compliance. And when you see the different components that we have in our classrooms, supporting our our students, we want to make sure that we have our our teachers have what they need to be successful. So we have a lot of resources that are provided to them. When it comes to behavior and all that is happening with the behavior supports that we have for students that have special needs, we you'll see more as we go along, but that's a big priority for us. And then when it comes to compliance and the least restrictive environment, picture you see right there, we're going to spend a lot of time. So you'll be seeing a big snapshot of how we overall support the students and their needs and making sure that they have, they're receiving their instruction in the least restrictive environment. So with the outstanding Vision 2030 that we have for the district, we went through the process and we were thinking, where what's our place in this? Where do we contribute to the work? And so we found that we have some significant spaces under the H for high expectations and equity. For high expectations, we, this this group of educators and professional support, we understand that the importance of academics, setting benchmarks, and really helping make sure students have what they need to meet that make that growth and meet those goals. So we also have an understanding that our students can contribute to the community. Our students can do, can participate in pathways. And so we have a place there. And then our students also can, you know, be a part of the multi-tiered support services. So when it comes to our school sites that have our programs, our students are included. And then for equity as a foundation, definitely having this this the space that we have where inclusive excellence in customer service and how our teams, our teachers, our staff, from clerical to our program specialists, how we interact with parents is very important to us. So I know that, you know, being such a large Selpa, we're a single district Selpa, Special Education Local Plan Area for for anybody that might not know that. So we are the entity that maintains a compliance data for the state. And so we this, I also support as a special education director. So having both of those roles is very significant. But when you look at the overall student population by subgroup, you can kind of see that there is a rough parallel to the number of students in the nationality and the subgroups that represent our district and our community and the department. When you see that many students that we support, you would think that there would be nice, sufficient structure in place to support the many programs that we have that you're going to see in depth tonight. But this is our work organization chart from all the way up from our assistant soup, all the way down through the different staff. And so it it looks like there's a lot of people, but the work at our school sites that's happening is very key. And so a lot of our program specialists, our point of contact are here in the room. And they are the 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 heart and soul and the backbone that support our teachers. We know that that's what teachers are at our school site. So having the people here that support them, so those are the ones in green. And then across the whole structure, you see that there's two assistant directors. One, Ms. Willis is over instructional services and then Ms. York over operational services. So we kind of just divide the work so that it just makes sense as we support what's happening at our school sites. So when you see this slide, we're going to go through it. I'll go through quickly and if there's questions you have, please, we can we can get to that. But when we when you hear us and speak about least restrictive and more restrictive, what we're really looking at is students that are found eligible, they they deserve to be receiving instruction at their level. Specialized academic instruction is what our special education teachers that hold the credentials, that's what they are trained in providing. And so it starts with general ed and I'm going to go through each of these. And then it goes to the the far right three that are more restrictive. And one one thing to note in preparation for this, we have 199 classrooms of special education teachers and support. So that's something that will you'll see come through the presentation. But we have a it's a pretty significant charge that my colleagues support our students with, but we're excited. So the first the first group, after students that are in general education, the the next group would be students that are in the Resource Specialist Program, RSP. They receive specialized academic instruction from the teacher and from from their RSP teacher as well as gen ed teachers. There are, they are, sometimes they're pulled out, sometimes they're pushed into the classroom. But the caseload max for RSP students is 28. Here's just an overview of all of the different, the curriculum that we use in elementary. We, there's, it's a lot there, but for RSP program, they mainly use what our gen ed teachers use. There's information that we have, we use the Wonders, but there's another version. The accompanying version is WonderWorks. And so all of the different pieces that we have there, this is where our special education teachers, our RSP teachers, that's what they use. And so we wanted to bring you information as our school board and cabinet. You're going to see a lot of information related to the number of teachers and students and programs at our school. So I'll let you take a second to look at this and by broken down my cluster, this is the information that that we provided. And for me and for a special note on this one, during this current school year that we're finishing, we increased in elementary school by 311 students. So that means school psychologists, RSP teachers, all the different related services providers, they were all involved in looking at and making sure that students who are found eligible, most of them were going through the MTSS process at different schools. So they are, that's typically the beginning part of how they become into become eligible. So now for secondary, here's some more of the curriculum, information that we have. I didn't make note on the first one, but our second one, secondary one, the lesson support series down on the lower left. It's it's lessons that have been developed to support the RSP teachers with providing it mirrors our general ed curriculum and it provides lessons and support for the teachers so that they have information on how they can support our secondary students. And then here's the information for the number of teachers and students in the RSP program according to the the clusters. And for secondary, this number increased by 87 students this year. And just a special note for that, what that means and how what that looks like and where did those where did those kids come from? Those could be students that had to change a placement or maybe in one of the other bands that I'll I'll share next. But when you see the number, it's not just outright eligible students for initials. There's other information, but I'll speak more to that in a moment.
May I?
Yes.
These numbers that you're showing with the students, does that mean each one of these students had an IEP?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. And and many of them have, many of my colleagues behind us are the ones that are supporting our special education teachers in their respective clusters. So that's why it's very important for me to highlight and accentuate their work as they support our teachers with. Some of them are new, some of them are veteran, there's a lot in the middle. But with colleagues that we have as program specialist in the points of contact, they are the ones that have their fingerprints in the teacher's classroom, supporting them, making sure they have what they need to be successful. Okay, there's that one. So then now, the next part of the continuum for students that are receiving RSP support. And then if depending on a wide array of circumstances, if they go from RSP to mild mod or students that are initially tested and they become, they're the they become found eligible for mild to mod this level, we we provide them with a smaller class size, that's one of the the key pieces. So you see on the bottom there, the classroom max for mild to mod students is 14. Under that, when you see DHH, so if we have a dedicated DHH class, it's the max is seven. And for emotional disability, that would be eight. So a lot of the same information that we have here from mild mod. These these teachers in the at this level, they have the same, they have the same curriculum resources available to them. And here's the number for our elementary students. So these are the number of school sites in each cluster, the number of classrooms total at those sites, and then the number of students. And then for our elementary, this is for elementary. And for over the course of this year, 53 students, we increased by 53 students based on the work of the MTSS process at at school sites. And this this is the space where students have the ability based on eligibility reviews or triennial IEPs. If a student that is progressing that might be in the next band, mod severe, extensive needs, support, extensive support needs students, they might be able to go from that level up to this one. Or students that are progressing, they might be able to go from this one to RSP. But these are the numbers for elementary. Now for secondary, curriculum is still the same. And now here's our numbers at secondary. Again, middle school and high school sites, number of classrooms, and then number of students. And then for the secondary growth, 104 students this year. So our secondary sites are just as busy as our elementary school sites. So moving on, the next level would be what has been long referred to as moderate to severe needs, but now it's extensive support needs. And so this classroom max, there's 12 students per class. So this is where we have a different level of curriculum. The basics is what we were able to win our Golden Bell Award for. That's the curriculum that our our teachers in developed so many years ago and what so many, not just teachers in our district in this program, but other districts around the country use. But then these are the just the pieces of information we have for that. Here's our elementary numbers for the students that are in the moderate to severe program. The number of sites in the cluster, the number of classrooms, and again, the number of students. Notable for this, 48 students were plus 48, so we were increased by 48 students. And that was the information that's been happening over this year. For our secondary numbers, again, middle school, high school, number of classrooms, number of students. And for secondary students in the moderate to severe program, we increased by 43. So across these bands of students from RSP, mild to mod, and mod severe, you've seen growth across all levels. So for this next part, when you look at the alternative educational placement, this is information related to the number of students that are participating in whether it's non-public schools, short-term independent study, going for the more restrictive alternative education placement, residential treatments, home hospitals, subacute. Those are the more, the levels where students have more significant needs that have been outlined in an IEP. And that has been a determination by the IEP team, including the parent, obviously. And placement in those comes from an IEP, from the IEP team. So then rounding this out in terms of those, the numbers of students in those alternative education settings for K-12, the mild to moderate, moderate severe students, these are the numbers of students that we have in those programs. So before we go on to this next one, I'll leave that picture with Board Member Abilas Grande up there. But but at this point, is there any questions or does anybody have anything, just a point of clarification?
Ms. Grande?
Thank you for sharing all of this. Some of this I know the answer to, but I'm going to ask anyway for my board mates here. Explain the difference in the curriculum and goals such as between diploma and certificate of completion. And and the other ones, how old are our students when they enter our school district and where do they first start?
Okay. For the first one, the certificate of completion would be students that are typically in the moderate to severe program. For the first one, the certificate of completion would be students that are typically in the moderate to severe program that it's not a high school diploma for them. They were able to get that certificate of completion to show that they completed our program. And then typically from that point, they would enter our transition, our adult transition program that's happening at Anderson and ICEC. So the difference between that and then also the alternative pathway to diploma, what that's doing is we recognize, as I started earlier, that our students have potential. And so by engaging in the alternate pathway, we have the ability to provide them with instruction and support to help them get a diploma, a high school diploma that would fit their capabilities. And one of the parts that really drives us to do that is so that our students can achieve employment. And many of them are trying to work in the district. They can be working in nutritional services, maybe as a rec aid, noon aid, depending on their capabilities. But that is something that we are, it's still really new for us to, we're really trying to explore what that looks like. And then your second question was that the age of when students are...
Yeah, how old are they and where do they go, TK, pre-K?
Yeah, so we have, and one of the slides will be speaking to it a little bit later, I'll give a foresight, is early start, it starts from birth. Students can receive support from an early start teacher here in our district as early as from birth, all the way up to two years and nine months. And so that would be providing 30 minutes a week with one of our early start teachers, either in the home or coming to our location and just providing them with Independent Family Services Plan, IFSP. But then if you have other students that, for the early start students, those typically are students that are born with a complication at birth and then the hospital would make a referral to a regional center, inland regional center, and they would then contact us. And so we have a partnership, we have a pathway to get that information. But if maybe not something at birth or when they're infants, if a family feels that there might be something that would require an assessment, we have our Early Childhood Assessment Team, ECAT, and that's something where they can get an assessment. And we try to do those before they start preschool so that we can get them plugged in and into a program so that we have early intervention.
Okay, and then just one last thing. I also once asked you about the cost of our non-public settings and I think that's surprising how big that is. And my question for that is, I remember when we actually were bringing some of those children back and I had one of those in my own classroom. And I was always surprised at how great he was and I didn't understand why he was sent away in the first place. So I just wondered if we ever do a review of those students that are in those non-public settings given the high, the cost of that. I mean, just for one student, what is it, like a million and a half or something like that? It's crazy.
I don't think it's quite that high, but there is a cost incurred by the district. So I went back to this slide so you can see for residential settings on the top right corner, we have none currently in a residential. We have two pending. And that kind of speaks to maybe the criteria that you were talking about, Ms. Abilis Grande, in terms of, you know, students' needs based, you know, we understand in our department that all behavior is communication, especially for students who can't communicate. So we use the opportunity to let our professionals, you know, support our students, work with our students. And then depending on, you know, when we have behavior support plans or BIP, behavior intervention plans, whatever, a functional behavior assessment, whatever we do to help really diagnose and see what the issue is or what's driving the behavior, then we provide supports. We try to really give them everything that we can. In rare cases, we have to go the more restricted, we have to explore that as an option. But for the cost, and when you say, do we revisit it, yes, we absolutely do. Because we don't, especially the heart, if you got to talk to each of the people behind me and all the people in our department, our goal is not to send students away. Our goal is to let our students receive their instruction right here. And that's what we're passionate about. So we constantly are looking. Our coordinator, Suck Services, you know, that number is down at least 30 or 40 from at least two or three years ago because we are committed to making sure students have what they get. And we don't need to send them away, we want them here.
Ms. Alexander?
Thank you, Dr. Rubio. I just have a question. When I look at the Resource Specialist Program and how it's broken down by teacher and then by students, then I look at the slide below it where it says maximum students, 14 students. I was just trying to do the math. And so I was trying to understand how does that equate in terms of the teachers versus the students in the classroom? Just trying to get clarity around that.
So yeah, thank you for that. And so what we typically try to do is based on the contract, our classrooms can have the assigned number, but then they can add two, which comes with an additional, they get extra pay for that. So our goal is to not do that. But we also have, in the Special Education Department, we have itinerant teachers that we have to deploy. And so with RSP especially, Ms. Willis is very creative in looking at our staffing to see who we can support. And as soon as a teacher gets a 28 for RSP, RSP cannot go plus two. Let me clarify. But when it comes to, for the other ones that they can, but for RSP, she's constantly looking at, you know, who do we have that we can support and send support to those caseloads so that they backs out at 20?
Thank you.
I also have a couple of questions. I have a ton of questions, but I'll just kind of, you know, stick to the ones. ED programs, so what's Inspire? What is Inspire?
So, yes, so right now we have, Inspire is a way that we've been trying to support students. So we have four classes and they're at elementary school. And two of the classes are focusing on students that have autism as their primary eligibility. And then the other two are classes related to just student behaviors. As we all know, especially this board knows, some of the students and families in our community, they come from trauma. There's things that students experience. And so a student might not be autistic, but they are exhibiting extreme behaviors. So we've through a very rigorous process in looking and working with our BCBA's, our Behavior Program Specialists, for students that fit a profile that could benefit from targeted support and services in one of these two classes, we've put that in motion. So it's something that we've attempted to allocate our resources to, to support. And it's been pretty effective.
So those are specific to elementaries? And then so ED, what is ED then?
Emotional disability, the classes. So in high school, in middle school, they are embedded. And we do provide supports with our staff. So as they get push-in, for students that are emotionally, have emotional disability, then we look at what their needs are, whether it's in a, maybe there's a period of students that have that and then they have the supports accordingly.
So if I'm understanding correctly, Inspire is more towards elementary and then your ED is more like secondary, middle school and high school?
We do have ED classes in elementary as well, but those are self-contained classes. But mostly secondary is what you're referencing.
Well, I'm actually looking at the self-contained, I'm looking at the Specialized Academic Instruction, SDC. And then under that you have mild, mod, DHH, Inspire, and ED. So those would be considered self-contained classes, right?
Yeah, we have a mixture of both.
No, not that one.
Which one?
That one.
So yeah, so those would be more like the mild, mod level supports. But just if the student has that as a disability.
But that one is self-contained, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, those are the mild, mod.
And then the other question that I had really, I think it was in one of your later slides, you kind of provided some information. So first of all, on the different clusters, initially you only had teachers and the number of students. And then as we went through the presentations, later site numbers were added. So then, you know, you're indicating like five sites, 10 classrooms, things like that. I'd be more curious to see, and maybe in a Friday update or something like that, what specific school sites belong to each cluster? I would be curious to see some of that information, kind of like across the board as you, you know, included in this presentation, just a little bit more of the breakout or breakthrough of it. And then on one of your last slides that you had gotten here, I just wanted to, I think it was the last slide, I wanted to understand a little bit better the difference between non-public schools versus like residential programs. What are some of those like differentiating factors? Like who would we recommend to a non-public school versus who would we recommend to like a residential program?
Yeah, thank you for that. So for us and what we've been working through, so if there's a student, a candidate for a non-public school would be a student that maybe has physical aggression where we don't have the staffing available to provide support for them. The residential treatment would be exactly the destination for a student that does have uncontrollable aggression that is injuring staff. We always want to protect our teachers, we want to protect our classified staff. And so that would be one of the biggest differentiating factors to get them between the two.
But both are aggression? I'm sorry, you said aggression for both?
Yeah, I mean, but depending on level of injury, level of ability to support. So if a student is in one of our classrooms, let's say it's a middle school and he is, he or she is injuring people, but there's not staff that is... Our teachers are trained in CPI and how to provide support for students when they're in a behavior episode. But if two or three or more staff are trying to intervene and are becoming injured, that's an indicator that that might not be the best placement for them because they need different levels of support. So residential would provide that, a residential treatment. But thankfully, we don't have any students in residential.
So kind of going a little bit back to what Ms. Abilis Grande was asking in terms of, you know, how do we, you know, bring students back? Correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that usually change of placement recommendations come from the IEP teams, right? So if a student is placed in a residential program or in a non-public school, it would be that agency's IEP team. So then, you know, in my mind, I start to think, well, if I'm one of those agencies and I have a student, what is my incentive if I'm getting paid so much to house a student as a teen on this side? What is my incentive to really return a student to their home district? And so I guess my question is, what role do we exactly play as a district in getting some of those students to be returned to us that may be ready to do so? Like how do we get involved? Do we, you know, what is the process for that?
That's a great question, thank you. And yes, absolutely, even for the students that are in residential, we still yearly send a team out to support and monitor and walk the facility to take a look and see. And that's even for our non-public schools as well. A combination of my team will go and see each one, so at least a minimum of every year. And so when we know that there's students, because our team, once a student goes, they don't just, okay, forget about them. So we have a program specialist that's dedicated to just know where our students are, which non-public schools. We go and visit and then we get regular updates on them. And because we're constantly trying to see, is this kid fit a profile that can come back? So our team is dedicated to not just leaving it up to them. We have, we even try to send support and representatives from our district to their IEPs. So we don't just let them go and then left to their own accord. I'm sure the residential ones would want to keep them because they want to, you know, they want to make sure they have the income and the support. But for us, we are very committed to making sure that if they're away from us, we have sight on them, we support, we check with them, we make sure that when they're ready to come back, we can bring them back.
So maybe part of like a collecting data, I would be interested in, you know, just like you're providing here, how many are at non-public schools, maybe on a yearly basis? You know, how many of those are actually, you know, returning or how many returned within a year? So that we can kind of track some of that information as well. That's all my comments for now. Ms. Alexander?
Sure, thank you. Dr. Rubio, I was looking through the presentation just in case it was in there, but I didn't see it. What is the actual breakdown of the demographics of students that are receiving RSP services?
That are receiving RSP services?
Yes.
Would it be the first slide with the two?
Okay, there you go.
Yeah. It was like the fourth slide, I think.
Okay, I see it, thank you.
Yeah. And back to one of our comments earlier, the reason why we don't have the number of school sites for students with RSP is because every school has those. That's a student, that's not something that we would indicate. Every school has RSP students, they have a RSP teacher. So that's when, when you saw it transitioned to elementary school, it's because we wanted you to know the number of schools per cluster. Okay, so for the students that are in our subacute facility, this was us a visit probably last year. And so at that facility, we had a total of 10 students served this year. And so this is something that we, not only us, not only one of our board members, not only all of you, but our department is really looking at, continuing to see how we can support this population to make sure that they have what their needs, have their needs met, but also to see what options we have available. So then for preschool, we know our superintendent and cabinet and board, we all have an understanding of preschool and the importance of early intervention and making sure students are, you know, able to receive the supports, the academic supports. So we're really looking at making sure that if they can be in a general preschool setting with their age-appropriate peers, we're starting there. And then if there is another part of their eligibility or part of their behavior needs and supports, then we support them accordingly. But we used a state preschool with Dr. Kelly and her team. We have inclusion. And then we also can provide direct instruction in preschool classes as well. So we have that available as well. And then for the number of students in preschool, these are the number of sites and students and the number of classrooms. So as I referenced earlier, here's a slide that just gives you a summary from August 24th to a little over a week ago. The number of ECAT, Early Childhood Assessment Team assessments was 221. So these are all students that are before preschool. And they are, many are found not to be eligible, many are. And so we provide the necessary supports and in preparation for them to have an IEP up and running before they go to one of our comprehensive schools. So this year we had two teams. A team consists of a school psychologist, a speech and language pathologist, and a special education teacher. And so we had two teams this next year, knowing how significant the number we have, it's, we're going to move to three teams. We're going to move, so we're adding for 25, 26 to make sure that we can continue to meet the need. For the preschool, as a previous slide showed, we have 19 preschool teachers. And then we have two early start teachers that are supporting from birth to two years, nine months.
I'm going to, Ms. Tillman?
Yes, sir.
Is there a waitlist, a waiting list for people who want IEPs?
So there's not a waitlist, sir? But there, so we assess them as often as we can, but with the number of teams that we have, we fit them in. So basically, there's a running list of students that we have in the queue to assess with the teams that we have. But, so we don't say, oh, you're not, you're going to have to wait, other than we're trying to, we get to them as fast as we can.
Well, if there's a parent out there watching right now and they said they've been told that their child could benefit from an IEP, but they haven't been given one, but they want one, what's the process?
So if they're already on the list and they've already connected with our staff?
Hold on, you mentioned list.
Meaning if they communicated with our team, the Early Childhood Assessment Team? If they've already submitted, if there's been paperwork, if they're transitioning from early start or...
And I'm not talking about just early childhood, I'm talking about in general, just across the board.
Oh, okay.
So you're saying across the board, there's no list of students who want, or parents who want their kids to get an IEP?
So if a parent wants that, if they submitted a written request, then we would have to, we have to respond to that request within 10 days and we have to...
So the key is a written request?
If they want, yes, if they want that. So then maybe you might be referencing a parent who is a part of the MTSS process. So if there's a written request that shuffles the deck, we have to respond differently. If there's a student that's receiving instructional support in the MTSS process at one of their schools, then that's a conversation, a communication with the SST team. And if SST teams are giving parents information, but if a parent continues to say, no, I want my child assessed, then that's the communication that they communicate at the school site. And then they work with a school psychologist.
Do we have some idea what our capacity is? I know it takes a lot of resources to do an IEP. Do we have any idea what our capacity is in terms of how many IEPs we can do per month, per year? Do you have a number?
That would be very hard to tell. We have, the best way to answer that question, sir, would be to look at the number and it's coming up in a slide or two, the number of staff members we have that are hired to complete the work. So the number of school psychologists. So every school site has a school psychologist assigned. So every school site has a school psychologist assigned. Many of them, because of the robust MTSS processes at our schools, there are, there's, there's not a school psychologist that is not have work to do. So all of our team is working really hard to make sure that they're meeting the needs of that community, that school community.
You know what would help me? You don't have to have it today, but if you can just give me like a three-year trend on how many IEPs were done each year for the last three years? Then I get a feel for how many IEPs we do each year.
That's a great perspective.
That would give me my perspective, I need, yeah.
Yes, sir, okay. My team is making that note, and we'll provide that to you.
Thank you.
Friday updates.
Ms. Evelyn Grande?
Again, I'm going to ask a question that's rhetorical, but I really want it out. Explain to us how big a deal this is that we, San Bernardino City Municipal District, are our own SELPA, and how you do the job of two different positions. But it's always been this way, I guess that's a good thing, you are in partnership with yourself, so you must have some late nights there.
We're busy.
Both of you, I know, yeah. So you are both the Director of Special Education and the SELPA Director. So you might look like you're not in your office, but wherever you are is your office. So explain to us at length on that.
Yes, ma'am, yes, thank you. So when you, when you think of, when you hear the term SELPA, Special Education Local Plan Area, that is for the state requirements and making sure that our, we're in compliance with, making sure the programming is correct for our special education students. So the programmatic piece, looking at the data, the IEP data, how many data, how many IEPs are, have their, are affirmed, signed, all that stuff. So that, that whole side of the, of the coin is related to compliance, statewide compliance, making sure that we're following those, those regulations. The Special Education Director is, would be considered the person that supports with the instructional programs, making sure that our teachers have what they need, the curriculum, making sure staffing is done. So that's why when you see myself and the two assistant directors, that's how we, I like to refer to us as a tightly, you know, a braided cord, where all three of us are in, constantly doing different things. We are, one is supporting with ADR, while the other one's doing a school site to support a principal. And then I'm in with any group of, maybe with the SBTA or, so all three of us are just constantly going, and with regular communication, we're able to really cover the needs of those two positions, SELPA Director and Special Education Director.
Ms. Alexander?
Sure. I just want to go back to IEP process. How does a parent even know what to do and who would they talk to? What is that process?
A great question, and a lot of our community might not know that, and so I'm glad you're, you're bringing that to the light. So what, what my, what I would do is I would want to share my heart with that parent. If you came across a parent in the community, or if I'm in the State of Brothers over there by the wall building, if I were to see something like that, what I would, if it was in a scenario where I could ask, or we were talking about it, basically, if a parent is concerned with a student's progress, what they would want to do is they would want to start with the child's teacher, probably their gen ed teacher. And during parent conferences, that's a great time for parents to get information. But then if they are having regular SSTs, right, with our, the expectation from our elementary instruction department to really make sure the MTSS supports, right, targeted intervention. That's what students need at elementary school especially, to make sure that their needs are being met. So when you have a, like the NWEA data, when you're looking at a universal screener that shows that this student is struggling academically, and then you look at the teacher, a little report card, you look at different things, the parent's beginning to see, well, my student is struggling, what can I do? So starting with the teacher, and then if they do, if they jump to a request for an evaluation, and that's, that's in motion, another process where we respond and, and we move forward with that, or we meet with the parent to communicate. But the MTSS process is a way for students to receive targeted intervention. And the groups are not set for six months, the groups are typically between six and eight weeks, and then they reevaluate them, and then they give them the information. If the student is showing growth, then they continue to monitor for, maybe for another cycle. And then they end up, maybe they can go back into the class and not needing that targeted intervention. But for the student that you might be referencing, they're continuing. That's where Child Find comes, that's where my team is fully aware of what happens when you, when we suspected this. But we don't need to wait for a parent. If we, the, the, the school psychologist, if the principals, hey, we have a student who's gone through two cycles of targeted intervention, flatline, there's still no growth. That's a profile that we would want to be aware of, and the school psychologist would want to be aware of. And then we would, you know, communicate with the parent, an SST, we would have somebody join them, and then we would be able to start that process. But when we see school sites, when they have a student who is struggling and consistently, we have the responsibility to go and talk to the parent and say, hey, we're seeing this, do you see, how is the student at home? And then start that process. But really, we don't just want to let our parents, it's up to them. It really wants to be us doing our part.
So is the IEP process, how long does it take in terms of actually filling out the application and the process and then executing it? So how long does it take for all that?
Once an assessment plan is signed, then the assessors have 60 days to complete the evaluation. So it's not, again, six, there's no waitlist, there's nothing like that, just in that timeline. And when it comes to these types of scenarios, we don't want to just, you know, push it off and wait. Depending on the time of the year, that's, we have some busier times, like right now is a very busy time. But no matter what time of the year, if the student has the needs, then we have to respond. But after they, once they complete the assessment, then they will have it, they will hold an IEP meeting, and the psychologist will share their results with the IEP team. And because the psychologist is the one that did the evaluation, they will then make a recommendation, an eligibility recommendation to the IEP team. And then the parent will respond, the teacher, the special ed teacher, they will all come together, and then they will look and see, looking at the data, then there will be an eligibility, or they will be made, it'll be spoken that the child did not qualify. But it's every, there's no two IEPs are exactly the same. So every student's needs, and then you look at other factors from, you know, what the student brings to the table.
Okay, thank you. And last question, do we have any success stories that we can reference from students who've graduated out of this district that were on IEP? And there's been success in terms of their journey either into going to college? Because I understand Cal State Fresno has a program, it's a Wayfinders program, but there's other opportunities and other pathways. Do we have any success stories to mention?
Ma'am, I would say we have thousands. With this district and this commitment of the colleagues behind me that have been doing this for many years, we have students that graduate with IEPs from our schools, and they go to Valley College. They, once they do their general there, there's, they go to, they can go to Cal State. Ms. Catalina Castillo, one of our parents, her son and her brother, they're products of our district, and they've gone on to achieve bachelor's degrees. So there's many, many that have gone through and really benefited from my colleagues in the program that we provide. You all provide as our board.
Thank you. I have also one, one question that I think, I, it wasn't clear to me, that I want to kind of go back to. Mr. Tillman had asked earlier if there was a list. And I think one of the things that he was referring to, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but this is my question now, I guess. There was a couple of years back where these ECAT assessments, there was a waitlist for it. There was a waitlist. And I'm not entirely sure what the waitlist was or how it was, because once a parent requests an assessment in writing, so that's the key, right, they have to request the assessment in writing. We have 60 days, 15 days to respond with a prior notice or an assessment plan. Once the parent signs that assessment plan, we have to complete that assessment within 60 days. So I know that there were, especially for those assessments, I don't know if that wasn't being completed in a timely manner, if there was actually assessment plans that were signed and returned. Like, I'm not entirely sure of the details, but I do know, because we got parents reaching out to us several years ago, that those assessments were not getting done. So the question I have is, do we currently have any students that are pending assessments for ECATs?
So, yeah, I can't speak to years ago, so I, I was in the assistant director role at that time, and so I, I was not directly involved with that. But what I can speak to right now is, with the resources that we have with two ECAT teams, when there's an assessment plan signed, we have to, we have to go forward with the timeline that you suggested, that you spoke about. But right now, we, the cabinet has graciously, we're, we're looking at, we have additional staff that have sign up psychologists and, and SLPs that are doing additional assessments right now to help that, that, the number of students that are waiting for an assessment.
But we do have currently students that are not assessed, that are pending assessments, where parents have already returned an assessment plan for?
Not, not that the assessment plan has been submitted yet. So the, 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 the group of students that we're referencing that are waiting for an assessment do not have an assessment plan signed yet.
So how are they waiting for an assessment?
Well, they're, 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 we've made, we've, we've recognized, whether it's from ECAT, if we have students, whether it's people that walk in, they, if they come in from IRC or any, any level that they come to that office, we're taking down their information, and then the team is processing it.
So how many do we have?
I don't have that information right now, but we can get that to you.
That would, I would appreciate that. Mr. Santos?
A couple of questions. So if a student is making minimal progress and the teacher lets the parent know, what does the parent do? What, are they informed about, hey, these are your rights, this is what you should do, or what is that process?
In terms of if they're, like, if it's a gen ed student that is not, has not become eligible yet?
Correct.
What, we, we try to use the parent conference time, we have the two windows throughout the year. We, the teachers, and so if our team is working with the special education students that already found eligible, but if a teacher has a student that is not showing progress, like you referenced, then we want to, you know, the school site, the principal, they're really looking at using that data, the NWEA data, to see what, what, what's our landscape, what students are not showing growth. And then when they have those students, those are the ones that typically go to a learning center, those are the ones that are struggling. That show, they look like they're struggling academically, so we provide them with targeted intervention. They're struggling with phonemic awareness. We, in the learning center, they have the ability to receive targeted intervention support that's really helping with that specifically. But that's where the communication with the parents would come, that if they're a student that maybe has two cycles, that's not really showing growth, then the school would communicate with the parent and say, let's have a student study team, an SST, where the parent would come and we would show them the information that, you know, and just see if there's anything happening at home, any kind of factor that would be helping or contributing to them not. Maybe there's attention issues, maybe there is something that they're not, they're struggling with. And so they would have that, it's a documented meeting, and then that would be information for us to get into for, you know, to see a possible future evaluation.
Thank you. And then my second question, and you may have covered it, but I may have missed it, so I do apologize if I did. School psychologists, do we have one per site? Do sites share school psychologists? What's kind of the breakdown?
Yeah, we have at least one dedicated to each of our schools. And some that maybe have different caseload numbers they support, other, so depending on as needed. I do have a slide that'll show you the number, and then how we, how we use them is, basically, they support their school site. We do have a bilingual rotation, so psychologists that are bilingual can complete bilingual assessments. So we factor that in as well to make sure that that's, that they're assessed in that language so that we can, you know, rule out that it's not just a language deficit. But there will be a slide that has information about that. But every school site does have at least one school, one psychologist assigned to them. Here's where I left off, so then, so when you see related in psychological services, so this is the, the staff that we have in these components. These are related services, these are needs, areas of need that students might have that are related to their eligibility or just difficulties that they're having. So adaptive physical education, VI orientation mobility, those are all the components that we have. That, these are people that if, if a student has an assessment that requires one of these related services, then one of our, our staff supports with, and they're on their caseload. And then their needs are met throughout the year, and they would, then it would be just like an academic goal. It would be giving them an opportunity to, you know, make progress and show progress. And then they would have a goal or goals, and then they would be able to be reevaluated every three years, just like they would for eligibility. So the part, Mr. Santos, we're looking at our school psychologist. Some of the school psychologists are at a couple sites, so we have, every school site has a school psychologist available to them. But then we also have 11 ERM's, educationally-related mental health services psychologists. And then where our number is climbing with our speech and language pathologist because of the level of language needs that we have. But yes, we do have psychologists for every school site.
If I can get a clarification there, is it one per site, or is it a psychologist that is split?
It can, it can be some, depending on the caseload, it can be one. We have some schools where the, the, the community, the school processes, it's, it's busy enough on a consistent basis, it's only one. But we have some other schools in different parts of the city that don't require one dedicated school psychologist.
Thank you.
So this is something, again, as I referenced, our coordinator of psych services, she monitors this daily, our team monitors this daily. And looking at the number of students eligible and how many are pending. So this is the information related on the boxes below, those are the ones that make up the 573. Those are the ones that are pending, those are students that are at school sites in our district that are in the process of having a signed assessment plan, and they are moving forward. And then an IEP team will be held to verify if there is eligibility recommendation based on the offer of fate. So another part that, like Ms. Evelyn Grande was talking about, looking at our compliance, this is where we have information related to CDE complaints. Alternative dispute resolution is what we use to, to assist a family. So if there's a school site that has, a parent has a disagreement at an IEP, then we have a process that we've developed that we allow them to be sent to, we get their information, and we schedule an ADR, and we provide the parent, we allow, have them come and meet with one of us managers. And we kind of look through all the issues, what the difficulty is, what the disagreement is, and then we help to build resolution. So this, single-handedly, is what's really helped us not get more CDE complaints for things that are happening, because our team is dedicated to making sure parents' needs are met. And we're, we have to bridge the gap between trying to not take over for school sites, but we have to try and make sure that they have, the parents are receiving, they're being heard for what their concerns are, and then we're trying to bring resolution. The Federal Office of Administrative Hearings, due process cases, we've had 11. And those are ones that I spend a lot of time in, working with our attorney, to make sure that we respond accordingly, and we make sure that we're in compliance with what is being recommended. And then there's been two situations, two scenarios where, as you know, as board members that have required approval this year. And that typically is because of the amount of involved with the settlement, whether it's compensatory services or anything that's a bit larger amount, but we provide you with that information. So now we're looking at behavior. And so this is something, you may have seen this, this triangle before. We know that when it comes to the tiered level of support, we, we know that, you know, 80 to 90% receive the tier one on the right side in the areas, in the arrows. That's where you see, because kind of what we're doing. But really, this is our, our, the best first instruction, we're really trying to make sure that all students receive this. But then when you have tier two, this is kind of students that are identified, they need additional support. And then tier three is the most intensive. So the next slide is more specific to what we do. So when you look at this case, this, this year for behavior, we had 156 referrals from school sites for tier one support. So there was scenarios where they made a referral and our team responded. And by going out and providing professional development to the staff, by just really looking and seeing how we can support classroom environments, 107 of those cases were resolved. So the remaining 49 went to tier two. And so we have BCBA's that, that are supporting with this level. And so that looks like just integrated support, looking at how we go through and see what's really going on in the classroom in terms of what can we impact and how can we support. That would include a behavior. That would include a, a behavior intervention plan or an FBA, um, as needed. But of the 49 cases that we, that went to tier two, 35 of those were resolved. And then that, the remaining 14 ended up being a tier three. And those were IIS's individualized, intensive individual support, a one-to-one. And those were the ones that we went through and, um, that, it looks like that was a solution that, for those scenarios. So as you can see with the behavior, um, we're really looking at trying to make sure that for students that are already found eligible, we're trying to make sure that their behavior is supported using our staff to make sure that the impact is lessened for schools, for the classrooms.
Good question, sorry, before you move on. For, for this, you know, progression, um, are these students that are already on an IEP or is it a combination of both or no, they're not?
These are, these are students on an IEP, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, these are students, so, um, we know many of you may have, um, communicated with different families in the community that, you know, they don't have an IEP, they're not found eligible yet. And they're, you know, depending on the circumstance, they're, they're having significant issues. And we're responding, uh, we're attempting to respond to that as well, just to provide guidance and support. But this, what you're hearing and seeing right here is all students that are already found eligible.
Okay, and then, um, my other question in your related in psychological services, I didn't see BCBAs listed on there, but I see them here, so we don't have district BCBAs, do we contract out?
To go all the way back to the beginning, I'm sure, I'm sorry, they did not highlight that. On the far right side, we have, um, the, the BCBAs right there under our coordinator of psych services.
Okay.
So we have three BCBAs, um, in the district. And we also contract with, um, an agency to provide another one that's as needed, I mean, as needed, but yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, got it, thank you.
So then we have a program specialist that is supporting, um, our, um, our school sites. And so as of December of 2023, um, she has gone to 16 elementary schools, one middle school, and, um, provided ADHD, um, presentations during the MOUs and has really gone to great lengths to make sure that, um, the school sites, the teachers, the gen ed teachers are receiving, um, a presentation. And many of you might have seen her at some of our other meetings, um, like ALI or the summer conference. But, um, we just want to make sure that gen ed teachers are getting information related to ADHD and what that looks like. And, 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 and a student that has that profile, what are some strategies and tips that you can, we can implement to help support them? And this is for gen ed teachers. And then also, um, for autism. There's been four schools that have received her autism training to make sure that they have, um, an understanding, the gen ed teachers of, a student with autism, again, there's no two students that have autism that are exactly the same in their capacities. So just providing them with, um, gen ed teachers with information and support on how they can support these kids has been very helpful. And we're going to continue to, um, support her and encourage her to do that. And that is something that we're communicating with principals as well. So for our department, um, we, we have, um, professional development opportunities, um, for Let's Go Learn, when you see that on the left. That's an opportunity for teachers to really just see how that tool can be used to support, um, the work that they do in, in providing assessment data, um, ongoing assessment data that can help, help guide their, their decisions. The center brochure, the center picture is our summer conference that we have coming up this summer, uh, on July 22nd and 23rd at Arroyo Valley. It's, um, our team went through a great process of really looking at what do we want teachers? And this is for special education teachers and administrators. What do we want to, um, how can, what can be our approach for the 25, 26 school year? And that's what we came up with, from compliance to confidence, empowering IEP teams to lead the way. And that's what we want, we want to build capacity, we don't want, um, schools to be, they want to, we want our team to be a resource to help support the work they're doing, but, um, we don't want to do the work for them, so we're really intentional with that. And then just multi-centry strategies, things that we're doing to make sure that, um, staff can receive professional development that's relative, relevant and relative to what they need. So now, um, we're around in the end, a lot of pictures are going to be the, to end the presentation. But, um, this is something, community is what, um, we exude in the special education department. I, on, um, when we have Friday meetings, I, it's just really, it really, it's very touching for me to know when I can walk into a room and you, you hear that buzz in the room of people that are professionals, that are really dedicated to their colleagues, that, you know, they would do anything for each other. And that's what drives us managers in the sped department to make sure that they have what they need to be successful. But community means a lot to us. And so, um, how we are supporting, um, the community that we serve, CAC, Community Advisory Council, this is our board from 2325 that we're finishing up. We have another, our last meeting tomorrow, um, and we just installed a, a new CAC board for the coming two years. And these are the names of our colleagues. And, um, many of the people here, they, they, they support, um, um, in some way, shape or form with making sure that our CAC parents, if they, whether they attend or they present, we make sure that parents in that capacity, in that forum get support. The Unified PE, so our, we have a partnership, um, based on the vision of our, our cabinet and our superintendent and our school board, um, the Special Olympics of Southern California. We are in the process of just really, um, reinvigorating a, a partnership with them so that our students can receive, um, involvement and support from the Special Olympics. And one way we're doing that, um, in the schools is to, um, come up with Unified PE, one of their programs. And so working with secondary ed to make sure that, um, we have these PE course codes that, um, we can begin to allow, um, gen ed students be in a PE, a Unified PE class with, um, special ed students. And so that's something that, um, our, our partnership with, um, San Bernardino High School and Pacific High School, that's something that has been very, um, beneficial to our students. And we have certificated, um, teachers that are really at the, at the, at the heart of this. And so you'll see them in some of the pictures coming up. But this next year, we do want to have, uh, Unified PE partnerships at all high schools. So that we, we have a, we're gaining ground on that, um, in the coming weeks. And it's going to come down to principals, um, receiving information from us at one of our upcoming meetings to make sure that they're aware of what it looks like and the supports, um, available. So now some of the pictures, um, the cornhole tournament that happened this year, you see our teachers right there, um, Pacific High School and San Bernardino High School. And you just see the, the students and then the participation. And there are gen ed students that are there as well. And, and just having this, um, this platform where they can do something, um, play a game together, right? It gets to the root of almost like when we're growing up and we see a playground, you see kids playing together. This is a, a, a different version of that when they're in high school. And it's just so fun to, to see and see what's happening with that. A couple, last week or the week before, they had the kickball tournament, um, up at Pacific. And it was, uh, great to get there and, and see that and just the, the excitement in the air to see what's happening there. So that's another part that we're really, um, out in the community trying to support. You see the Best Buddies Prom here, um, this is not just, um, focused on our students, is there other districts around? And so they get to come and we're, um, we host it and, and there's just a lot of, um, a lot of opportunities for students to just, you know, have their, have their opportunity to, to dress up and, and be with their, their classmates. And it's just a great, um, it's a great opportunity, it's a great, uh, event. Looking at our Parent Resource Fair, we actually just had it last week, um, these are pictures from that. And my team and, and our, our clerical, um, classified colleagues, um, are instrumental in just making sure that this is pulled off and there's an opportunity for parents in the community to get resources. And, um, this year was, um, we had 37 vendors. And it was just a great time for parents to, um, come through and we provide them with, um, you know, once they go to visit every booth, they can get a, a stamp and then they can get a Kona Ice. And it's just a, it's a great opportunity. So, uh, ASL parent classes, that's something that's been happening this year at Palm, I believe there are six of them. I, I did go to one as, um, as well, just want to show my support. And the, the, the instructor is, um, very passionate about, uh, American Sign Language. And so if you see all the people in the room, they're in their chairs, she would give every person like do the alphabet, you'd have to do the alphabet in sign language. And so even those of us that, I didn't go to any of them, uh, before that one, I still had to learn mine. And she put us on the spot and she would go around the room. And it was very, um, it was very unique if you're not a part of that. But by the end of that class, the, the families that were there were just benefiting from it. And it was just a beautiful thing. So, um, in the coming year, I really want to continue to, um, I want to invite cabinet, um, and any board members that want to go and see that program up there at Palm. And it's just really, it's something special to walk through and see, um, what, um, what the program is and, and how beneficial is the students. And then, um, our colleague, um, uh, Community Worker Liaison, Ms. Mariel, she goes and, and she's willing to, any school that reaches out and says, hey, I'm having a multicultural celebration, can you come? And we provide resources, so these are some of the ones that we've gone. And it's been really beneficial for those school sites. The, it's really helped parents receive at that, because a lot of times parents don't want to, maybe don't want to come to, um, a parent resource fair at our building, they want to go to, um, they're at their school site, and that might be a, a way that we, we open the door for them. So these events are very powerful. Um, in the fall, we have a parent, a college and career readiness fair. So this is one of our, um, one of the events that's been really successful in, in, in letting parents see that, um, you know, with the right supports, their students can attend Valley College or eventually Cal State San Bernardino. And using the resources that these universities and these colleges have to really provide them. And so we try to bring in a keynote, and this was our gentleman from this year, and just really providing, um, that, that layer of, um, possibility for students. That's something that we're very proud of that's happened. And then, um, another, the, the Anderson Olympics that happened, um, a few weeks ago as well. This is where all of our high schools have the opportunity to have their students, um, participate. And, and for many of you were there, and it's just, to say it's a special event is, it's, it's just a wonderful time for our students to just be, be, um, together, to receive, um, encouragement and support and just really be honored and praised for just their participation. So we're, this is an event that's very special for us in the special education department. And then for our adult transition, um, at Anderson, um, we have, um, so many good things happening there for students and families. And so when, um, parents come, they, they really are able to receive valuable information, whether it's for conservatorship or it's information related to how they can support their students and get access to the Department of Rehab. But this event, um, is, is done, I believe it's twice a year, and we just had a great turnout. And we're just going to continue to provide those resources to parents. Just talking about innovation and what we're able to do and how we can, you know, get, um, get to that next level. And so that innovation really helped the, the team, you know, almost 20 years ago, start the basics for curriculum. And so this is a celebration that they, they received the golden bell and we were able to go and, and, and benefit from that, um, that great, um, experience of, you know, the teachers that for so long ago were, um, at the heart of making that happen. And so that, that curriculum received the golden bell. And this is one of the celebrations that we have, that we're just very proud of. And I think that's it.
Awesome, and I'm going to go ahead and actually, um, call on Ms. Medina, she's been trying to make a comment. And so she was texting me, I apologize, Ms. Medina.
No worries, I, um, those are all good questions. And I know that, um, I, first of all, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Rubio, as well as all the team members that are there. Very extensive, uh, presentation, so that was very helpful. I, I guess one of my, my, my questions or, or basically comment to what it was, what was said is that, you know, there is a request, um, to have a student evaluated for IEP. You know, not all students are, you know, it's like, well, I as a parent want my kid, my child to be identified. And there's a process, and so sometimes they are, sometimes there aren't. And then just monitoring the results. And I think, um, we just need to note that so that our parents, you say, well, I want my child to have an IEP. It, it, there's a process, um, and, and trying to make sure, right? I'm, I'm assuming that's, that that's the case.
Yes.
That, um, it's, so it's not like a parent can say, well, I want my child to be, you know, have an IEP. They're, they're evaluated. And, and, and if they are, um, evaluated in the way that they, they do find it, then, then they would be identified. Otherwise, they would just receive additional resources.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am, yeah, we, we, the schools, our team and the schools, we work closely with, you know, when there's struggling learners, we want to make sure that the, the, for kids that have not yet been found eligible, we want to make sure that the schools are, um, putting these processes in place so that we can catch them. So we can, we can find them and we can make sure that they're getting that targeted intervention prior to an evaluation. And, and for many students in our district, um, with the right, with the right level of support, with the right, um, you know, room makeup, whether it's, uh, in a small group or receiving something in the learning center, those students, um, many do show progress. And that, that does allow them to not have to go through the process. But you're right, Ms. Medina, there are students that, um, would just, they're the ones that would fit the profile of a student that would be recommended for an evaluation.
Thank you, and thank you all for the presentation as well.
Thank you, Ms. Medina, and, and I just have one last question that I remembered, I had it written down. You mentioned earlier, um, Ms., Ms. Grande had asked a question in regards to, how do students initially come into the district, you know? And, and then you had mentioned, um, that we have a program in the district that services zero to...
Two years, nine months.
Two years, nine months, and so that was news to me. Can you, can you expand a little bit on that? Because my understanding, you know, um, when students are from zero to, you know, two, almost three years old, typically they go through the Inland Regional Center, right? And then we kind of get those early referrals that way. But then where is this group of students coming from? Is it like, um, parents making their own referrals or where, where is this population coming from?
It could be from word of mouth, um, for some of them, so yeah, you're right. So if a student is born, let's say a student is, um, a newborn, is, is given the auditory test in the hospital and they're found to not be responsive, so that might be, that, that might be an indicator. And that's what the largest percentage of our early start students are, are with auditory processing issues. And it could be very mild, it could be more extensive. But, um, but for other students, maybe parents are at a park and their kids are playing and, and, and then one parent sees something similar, and it could be just word of mouth. But, um, when we have parents come in for a search request, like just say, hey, I would like to be considered to, you know, to see if I can qualify for, um, early start services. And that, that's a process we have in place for them.
Got it, okay. Can, when, when you provide that information in terms of how many pending we have, can you identify which ones are IRC referrals versus like?
Search requests.
Thank you, yeah. And then, I mean, that's really much it, um, I want to say thank you so much. Thank you to all of your team, thank you for this presentation, it was very, very informative. And, um, we don't go easy with the questions. So I appreciate you taking the time and really, um, trying to answer and answering really all of the questions that came up and the ones that you didn't have answers to, that's okay. You know, we'll receive them in the Friday update, but thank you so much, um, to all of you for all of the work that you do. We really, really do appreciate your work.
Yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll provide that information. And as I reflect on, you know, anything, just to give more information, I just want to make sure that you all have the information that you're requesting so that you can see the work that this team behind me and our colleagues that are online. They're, they're doing the work, they're the, they're the backbone, they're the heart of our, our department. And I'm very thankful to be associated with them.
Thank you so much, everyone. Yes. All right, we're going to go ahead and move to 9.0 action items, 9.1 Personnel Report.
As presented.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote please. Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries, 9.2 Adoption of Resolution Approving and Authorizing Grade Span Changes at George Brown Junior Elementary School and Arrowview Middle School and Delegating Authority to Staff and, Staff to Execute and Follow the Notice of Exemption with the San Bernardino County Clerk and State Clearing House. Can I get a motion?
So I'll move.
Can I get a second? Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Mr. Tillman, vote please, Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, 9.4 Annual Report on Charter Schools 2023-2024. Moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Mr. Tillman. Moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Mr. Tillman. Vote, please. Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries, 9.5 Amendment to the 2025-2026 Classified Work Calendar for Inland Career Education Center between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and California School Employees Association, Chapter 183.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Vote, please. Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries, 10.0 Consent Items, 10.1 Approval of Consent List.
A move. Again.
Moved by Mr. Tillman, second by Dr. Wyatt. Is there any to pull? Vote. So we are going to pull an item, actually 10.4. And I believe that's you, Ms. Grande? So we're going to go ahead and vote on the rest. Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Grande? She canceled it. So is she, okay. Okay, so just for clarification purposes, did we pull the item, or did we vote on all of them? And she just abstained?
So if you want to vote on that separate item, so we were mid-vote when, when the item was pulled.
Okay.
So we can, so you were voting for the consent list, and now we have to go back on the individual item.
Okay.
So she did not abstain. So I need to, I need her vote for the consent list. Yes, please.
Okay. So can she give it to you verbal?
Yes.
Okay, so, no. Sorry about that. Awesome. Okay, so now we're going to vote on 10.4. Can I get a motion?
A move.
Okay. Moved by Dr. Wyatt, second by Ms. Alexander. Vote, please.
Aye, from Abigail.
Thank you. Ms. Medina? Motion carries. Moving on to 11.0 Reports and Comments by Union Organizations, 11.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association Report?
Sorry, no report.
Okay, thank you. 11.2 California School Employee Association?
No report.
11.3 Communication Workers of America?
No report.
11.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association?
No report.
12.0 Reports Comments, 12.1 Board Member Comments. And I'll start with Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. Well, hello, everybody. Just a few updates. I feel like we haven't, I haven't seen you all, but I have seen you all. But just from an update perspective, I want to say thank you to all of my colleagues that came to the Headdress Ball. Really appreciate the support and just coming out and just supporting us. It's for a good cause. And just really kudos to the teachers that were very instrumental in the planning, as well as the teachers that were part of just the whole process. You know, it takes a lot. It's a heavy lift. We had teachers that were models. We had administrators that were involved, from coordinators, et cetera, to even our students participating as volunteers. So thank you to everybody who played a part, because there's no I in team. So I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to the board for your support for the, the Link's Breakfast Ball, for the scholarship, and the, the actual table. It's important to note that we were able to give out $57,000 and $600 in scholarship dollars. So our board played a significant part in that. So thank you for that support. Both Danny and Michael Santos were there. And Michael Santos' son did a great job in his speech. So again, thank you. Just want you all to know that your money was put to use going towards two students for SBCUSD amongst other scholars within both San Bernardino and Riverside County. Next, last week, I was traveling, and I have to put a, one, congratulate my husband, who was a speaker for NJRLTC for Arroyo Valley High School. Major Williams invited him to speak on behalf of his experience as an NJRLTC cadet. And then he also honored us both with an award. So I wanted to say thank you to Major Williams and the cadets for that award, but also the opportunity for my husband to share his experience, because it always helps for students to be inspired and hear stories from us. So great job to him. But also thank you to Major Williams for that opportunity. This past weekend, I attended this, I'm also a delegate for CSBA. So I was in attendance with Abigail, as well as, I'm sorry, board member, Abigail, and Dr. Wyatt. So we learned a lot while we were there. But one area that I just wanted to bring up, and it's not so much where it's an issue for us, but maybe just an opportunity space for us to explore when it comes to our budgeting. I know that we're doing a lot right now in terms of budgeting and oversight, particularly with the concerns centered around Department of Education, federal dollars, and how there might be an impact. But I would just be curious, really from a public optics standpoint, because I know that Terry and his team are all on top of it. But when we look at the potential impact of either maybe reduction in enrollment, and maybe it doesn't happen, how are we looking at that in terms of the look ahead and looking at the risk associated with that from a budget standpoint? The other one is in reference to just any of the programs that we might be receiving funding for from a federal standpoint, even though I know that our federal dollars is probably a lot less than maybe some of our colleagues with other school districts, and it's approximately 9%, right? But just to have that oversight and that understanding for the public, so we can manage the perception is important. So just wanted to make sure that maybe in our write-up, or I believe we might be having an update in June, that we highlight exactly what we're doing and our success, and how we are going about with our budget oversight, and how we're preparing for any kind of risk associated with federal dollars being reduced, or most importantly, any impacts within our district when we start looking at our overall enrollment. I also had an opportunity to attend a session on disabsenteeism. And I wanted to say that a lot of what was being shared by the districts that were speaking, we're doing it. But it was definitely interesting just to hear best practices. So just wanted to give kudos to Dr. Rodriguez. And then I think that's it. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Medina?
Yeah, no, thank you, Ms. Alexander, for great information with regards to the presentation or the conference that we went to, the delegate assembly that we went to. I also want to say thank you to Kavnik, Mr. Kavnik, for sharing some of the data as well. That way we could also share with the delegate there. Very, very informative. The conference was very informative. The delegate assembly was very informative. And it was a lot of work. It was a lot of work. So I can see, you know, the dedication and the time that we have to put in order to be effective. Another side note, I do want to maybe ask the board, maybe have consensus. So back in 2024, back in June, we, Assembly Member back then, Eloise Reyes, had, had a bill, AD 2724, which is a high school pupils' voter registration. We supported that and we brought it as resolution. Well, it didn't end up passing back then. Now it's under a Senate bill with Senator Eloise Reyes, Gomez Reyes. And I wanted to try to see if we can support and create a resolution in support of SB 316. And it's, it's similar language, and they're hoping this time it will pass. But we'd love to try to get the same support that we did back then, and getting consensus if it would be okay to create a resolution of support, in support of SB 316, which is a high school pupils' voter, voter registration for our students here in the district and across the state as well. So I don't know if I can have that maybe by next board meeting. We can try to do a resolution similar to the last, last year's.
I'll, I'll go around and collect a consensus in a minute. When, once you're finished?
Yeah, and that's it.
Okay. So she's asking for support to create a resolution in support to SB, you said SB 316, right?
Yes, 316. And so it's a high school voter registration. Back then, the bill would help, you know, create more outreach in, in high school students to register to vote. And this bill, it is now, since Senator Eloise Reyes is now a senator, back then she was an Assembly Member, has brought this forward, and is moving through the House, through, already passed through the Senate, now it's going to the Assembly, and looking to get support in. And it's our youth organizing this. So these are ICUC youth that are organizing this. They organized the last one. And it just shows how involved they're getting in also trying to get students active and understanding their rights and so forth. So I know we did support it back then. It was under Assembly Bill 2724. This time around, it's Senate Bill 316.
Ms. Medina, how is this, and forgive my, you know, me not being super familiar, but how is this correlated with, we have board policy where we would support and help students to register early, for early, like early voting registration, right? So they can, you know, pre-register or something like that. Is this related to, to that? Or is this completely separate?
It is related. So with, with a resolution, it's just more or less just support of the bill. It, it's, it won't, it won't affect the policy. It's just more showing that we support the bill. But, so what it does, and I'll read some of the language, you know, 16 and 7-year-olds are eligible to pre-register to vote. And on the day of their 18th birthday, the state of California automatically turns their pre-registrations into an active registration. And so what they're trying to do is, you know, just trying to seek to increase voter registration amongst young Californians, high school voter registration. And so that's just, it's just kind of emphasizing, yes, we want, and we urge, you know, the, this, the, as a resolution and support in, in bringing this.
Got it. Thank you.
So it won't, it won't impact policy unless it changes up in the state. But in reality, for the most part, it's just kind of setting an example of we want to support this.
Got it. So Mr. Tillman?
I am as well. I'm in support. Would you be in support? Got.
Okay. You have consensus.
And then, and I'll send Karen language that we could use, but similar to last year's. She did a great job as well with that one.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Ms. Grande? I am so sorry, Mr. Tillman.
I actually want to say something, Mike. Just in response to the, the question that Ms. Alexander had in terms of the reduction ADA, I think it's the same, you can correct me, Terry, but if the district were to have reduced ADA, you still get funded at the higher number for one year, correct?
It's based on a three-year average.
Three-year average?
Yes, sir.
So, but you, if it goes down, you would get funded?
Yeah, we wouldn't feel that ripple until a, a year or two down the road.
Right.
But we would, we would eventually feel it. But again, it's based on a three-year average. So if we were to bounce back up, it, it could help offset that.
Okay. My only point is, so you have time to prepare. So you, you don't take the hit. If you, if the Roman goes down for one year, you don't lose funding. The key is, you got to make sure you realize that the, your numbers are down. So for the future years, you want to get your finances in line. And we do that most of the time through attrition, right?
Yep.
So you wouldn't hire as many teachers that let, that retired or quit. You would, you would do it based on, you would align your numbers with the, the new number of students.
Yeah. We, HR and business worked very closely during budget development for that purpose.
And I just say it because it, it gives you reassurance to know that you have time to align your spending with the new numbers coming up in the future.
That is accurate, sir. Yes.
And then I just, it's the end of the school year, and I really want to thank everybody in the district, all the employees, superintendent, assistant staff, teachers, classified class staff, all the certificated staff for doing a great job. And when I drive through the district and see either our employees working to keep the buildings looking great, or the kids walking with their instruments, or hearing the drum line going, seeing the, hearing about the field trips, the learning that's going on, all the different career pathways, the graduations, it really is an exciting time. And, and I know it's a lot of work going on to make all those things happen. And so I just want to say thank you to all the district staff for making it happen. I want to thank the parents for working as partners with us to help, help us educate their students and take advantage of all the opportunity that we work to give them. And I just have a real positive feeling about all the work that's going on in the district, and all the different avenues of success that is available to our students. And I encourage them to take full advantage of that. Thank you very much.
Ms. Alexander?
I just want to make sure I was clear about my request. I didn't really see that. Oh, okay. No, no, no. Yeah, it was just more of a, like, the mitigation strategy around, like, the look ahead. So just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Avalos Grande?
Well, my heart is filled with gratitude tonight. I, I did have a couple of mishaps right after the fabulous ball. Thank gosh. I, I thought, wow, that was the last that I had before I died. It was beautiful. But shortly thereafter, I did go to the Making Hope Happen Gala, and that was absolutely wonderful to see all of us there. And our musicians, again, our, our group there from the award-winning group were there. And I, I did take a tumble down the stairs. Thankfully, I wasn't injured too badly. But I did miss some really wonderful events, and I just want to... But I did miss some really wonderful events, and I just want to explain and shout out to all those people who, you know, I did not, I failed to attend the Cadet Corps Dinner at San G. Principal Christopher Tickles from Henry Elementary, he had a retirement recognition I would have liked to have gone to, very much so, at the Punch Bowl, the Lynx Breakfast, and our own district retirement event. So I missed that opportunity. Please know I was thinking about you and in my mind congratulating you. And I'm sorry I couldn't shake your hand, especially because it was my right hand I injured. But I just want to especially tell you that I missed our board meeting. I was very sad. And I think I shed a tear or two. Our time together is precious, and I really was reminded of that. And I would just want to thank the board for being the board. I'm having the best time of my life. And you're all a part of that. So God bless you, and a shout out to my daughter Gabrielle at home watching me and texting me and telling me to look sharp and stop doing this and that. I love her and my family very much. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Dr. Wyatt?
No comment. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Santos?
Thank you very much. Good night. No comment.
Awesome. All right, I do have a couple of comments. I'll try to make them quick. I just wanted to, you know, just share the different events that I have attended. It's been a busy, busy month, and there's been some that I was able to attend and then others that I couldn't. But I just, the Volunteer Recognition Celebration organized by Parent Engagement by Dr. Betris Gonzalez. It's always, always, always a pleasure to be there, you know, sharing with the parents. And it's been just a pleasure to see that grow. I think every year, they just keep expanding in their numbers in terms of parent volunteers. So, you know, great, great work that they're doing over there as well. And I did attend the California Cadet Corps at San Gregorio. I mentioned you, so they were, you know, well aware that you were there in spirit and couldn't attend. It was just an amazing event, really. I had attended previous ones with Major Williams at Arroyo Valley. This is the first one that I had attended with this group. And I must say, I was deeply touched. I know Dr. Kay was there as well. And just the level of camaraderie and just like brotherhood, sisterhood, that they all kind of had with each other. Some of them were graduating, and, you know, they were, they were very, you know, tearful and everything. And just the support that they displayed with one another in those moments that they were, you know, having was just amazing to watch, really. So I told them, if you invite me next year, I'll be back next year. So I was really excited to attend that. I also attended Raíces y Alas graduation. It was a senior ceremony celebration of Hispanic academic excellence organized by Supervisor Baca and his team. Unfortunately, it was at the same time and date as the Lynx, so I couldn't attend that event. But once again, you know, very, very small, very intimate, very private. It was really, really nice. The speakers that were there were just amazing. And just the students, man, we had some really great, just talented students that had, you know, 4.0s and above, so GPA. So again, and very, very humble students as well, you know. At some point, I was like, do they know, you know, that they're like, you know, like top, top? Because they were just so humble. So, you know, just really appreciated that. You know, also attending the special board meeting employee appreciation. I was running a little bit late because I couldn't find parking, but, and I missed our picture with Karen. But, you know, it was really nice to be there as well and just share with everybody. It's always amazing to watch, you know, employees and how, how long they've been employed, just in education in general, but with our district as well in particular. So that's always nice. And then the student board member banquet that was held here, I think it was last week or earlier this week, my days blend. It was so nice. I hadn't been able to attend previous years, but I took the time to make it a priority this time, and I attended. And just really interacting, I stayed till the very end, and I, you know, sat down and had dinner with a couple of the parents that were here. And so, you know, again, just very, very, very nice time to really just get to know, you know, the students and their families. And then lastly, I attended the SBVC, so San Bernardino Valley College Pharmacy Technology Graduation Ceremony. Also another great event. Oh, my goodness. I had attended, I don't think I did last year, but I think the year before I attended, and they only had two students there. But this time around, they had, you know, almost 10, I think, eight students that showed up in person. I think two students couldn't make it to like a total of 10. So again, these are students that are, you know, high school students that are also taking the pharmacy tech pathway. And so they're receiving their certificates. They'll be ready to, you know, start employment, working as a pharmacy technician. Some of them are going to, you know, continue on to Valley. Valley has a partnership with Loma Linda where, with their, you know, PhD program over there. And so, you know, it's really amazing to, the opportunity, really, that, you know, this program offers students. And we had students from Arroyo, Pacific, San G, Cajon, and then also the staff representing each of those high schools were also there. And so it was really nice. You know, they were called to the stage, and they actually gave the students a sash that they could be able to wear at their high school graduation. So, you know, all in all, and I know that we have a couple more, you know, events coming up, but just really, really amazing. I think I've really tried to attend as many as possible, and they've taken me up on my word. I say, if you invite me, I'll attend. And so I appreciate that. But anyway, that's all. I do want to give a special shout out to my son. He turned 18 this month. And he will be graduating high school this month as well. So, you know, I'm really, really proud of you, kiddo. So that's it. Thank you so much. Superintendent?
Thank you, President Savallos, and thank you for all the comments this evening. So I want to start by just thanking Ryan Rubio. He did an amazing job today covering a very important and complex topic. So kudos to Dr. Rubio and his team. They're doing a great job. I also want to recognize and commend Ernesto Caix, principal at King Middle School. His leadership at that school has just been powerful and impactful. And I really appreciate the work he's done in trying to change the mindset and the labeling and the perception of King Middle School. So thank you, Ernesto, for your leadership. And I do want to echo Mr. Tillman's comments. It has been a great year. We have accomplished a lot. Our principals, our teachers, our support staff, everyone across the district, the board, cabinet, everyone is working in synergy and making a positive impact across the district. Our parents are our partners. Our students feel seen and respected and valued. So I really appreciate everybody's work and everybody's determination to do what's best for our kids. So thank you, Mr. Tillman, for reminding us that everyone is doing great work across the district. So I want to just share some highlights of since the last time we were together. You may recall that as the superintendent, I've put together a community pulse committee where the board provided me names of members of the community, and I as well invited some folks. And we met several times this year. And we worked on not only listening from our community members of what the perception is out in the community positive, and what are also the areas that our community believes we still need to work on. They also gave me the opportunity to give them an update as to where we were, how we were doing towards our SBC USD Shines 2030. We provided them some information that they could go out into the community and serve as ambassadors to not only spread the great news, but also let the community know that those areas that we're still working on, exactly what we're doing, how we're doing it, and when we plan to achieve them. So board, I will be re-inviting the same members to see if they're willing to come back. But I also am going to reach out back to each one of you to ask you to submit maybe some additional names. Because the greater the committee, the more powerful we are. And I just want to give a shout out to Jim Delicia. You might remember Jim. He facilitated our work with the vision. He helped facilitate, and has been very well received and very well-liked for the community poll. So I send each member, we provided them a thank you gift and just a personal thank you from the board and the superintendent for their work. So very excited to keep that work going and alive. Next slide, please. And I've been working with Tim Prince to really start to grow the San Bernardino High School Alumni Organization. So he's invited me now a couple of times to come and speak and to share, again, the progress that we're making towards our multi-year vision, but also my effort to try to grow that organization. If you may recall, Tom Pace, Terry Komenek, myself, based on some work from our former San Bernardino High School student, Aziel Caeros, we are going to reopen the San Bernardino High School Museum. And so we see the San Bernardino High School Alumni Organization being a big part of that museum, not only when we open, but maintaining it and marketing, moving forward. So I do want to thank Tim Prince for allowing me to come and help create the energy. And I invite any of you, if you know any San Bernardino High School graduates out there that are in the community, please let me know. I will forward information every time the organization meets so that we can help to invite and build the community. So I want you to know that that energy is out there. Next slide, please. And like Board Member Alexander said, it's been a minute since we had been together. I know last board meeting went a little long, so we didn't have comments. But I didn't want the community not to know about the great work that our multilingual department is doing. So we had a wonderful reclassification ceremony at the 66th Stadium where 1,192 students were eligible to be celebrated that day for reclassification. Great work going on. Now, it happened to be Mother's Day weekend, so a couple hundred kids didn't show up that weekend. But nonetheless, we're very proud that almost 1,200 kids are being reclassified. So great work to the multilingual department. Next slide. And in that same vein of our multilingual department, we had our variety of biliteracy achievement awards celebrations at the California Theater. So I wanted the board and the community to know that, you know, we have created a form system to the seal of biliteracy, which is, we are, as far as I know, we are the only district in the state of California where we have created kind of a pathway to the seal of biliteracy. And as a matter of fact, I've encouraged Anna for this coming round of California School Board Associate Golden Bell Award. This program is, I think, very unique. And so as of this year, we celebrated 408 elementary students with their biliteracy award, working towards that seal of biliteracy in their future. We celebrated 629 middle school students on their way towards that seal of biliteracy. And I want to remind you that last year, we had 702 high school seniors earn the seal of biliteracy. And we're expecting that same number approximately this coming year. So this is a great program that this district has built. So kudos, Anna, to you. Kudos to the Board of Education for your vision on this. This is great. And we're certainly hoping to win a California School Boards Golden Bell with this program. Next slide. And continue further on excellence and becoming a district of academic excellence. I want to give out a big congratulations to San Andreas High School for earning the Model Continuation School Award. I know Dr. Rodriguez and I were there on a nice, cold, rainy day on the deck of the USS Midway in San Diego. But we were there to support Principal Dory Stratton and all her staff on their recognition. It was really, it was a great time. It was a great time. So congratulations to everyone at San Andreas High School. We're very proud of you. Next slide. And then we continue to do our work to communicate, celebrate, and then also identify those areas that we still need to work on in terms of our TIP policy and working towards excellence with our African-American student achievement. But I want to thank Deana Walker and Alani LeBeau from the Blue Foundation, who each year invite us, Superintendent from San Bernardino, Superintendent from Fontana, Superintendent from Rialto, to provide the community an update as to where we are with the objectives that we have. So we were very pleased to talk about some of the progress that we've made during, towards our TIP policy. We were very proud to unveil our new TIP policy dashboard that lives on the ETA website, on our district website. We are very proud to let the community know that every year, starting this year and moving forward, we will have a report to the board and the community that speaks specifically to our African-American student achievement and our objectives in the TIP foundation, so, our TIP policy. So I just want to thank Dr. Greer and Tamika for preparing all the information and documents that was requested of us. So great things are happening here. And so again, I just want to appreciate the Blue Foundation for always including us. Next slide. And boy, this is probably one of my favorite events, is attending the Island Empire Black Graduation at Cal State San Bernardino. This is a great, I mean, it's so much fun, this graduation. I really love it. We're there to cheer on the students. I know Board Member Medina was there, Mr. Santos was there, Anna was there, Dr. Greer. We were able to celebrate one of our equity counselors, Malik Rose, who won the Dorothy Ingram Award. And then I was happy to accept on behalf of the district, the Strength and Unity Award. So people are recognizing the good work that we're doing towards making sure that our African-American students are achieving. So I just want to give a shout out to Jonathan Canisha Bafong, who have put this together. It's a large, large event, and they make it look so easy. So shout out to them. And that same weekend, and unfortunately, on the same night as the Headdress Ball, I want to give a shout out to Francine Blacksher for our Pacific Islander graduation in San Bernardino Valley College. An equal fun event. So great, great events happening to show that inclusive excellence is something that we value as a district. Next slide. I want to thank the students over at Rodriguez Prep Academy, who are part of the school podcast program. They invited me over to share my story, not only my personal story, but my career story. And great kids, asking great questions. And this is probably the best part of my job, is interacting with the students. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to Principal Kathy Adenzio and the kids at Rodriguez Prep. Great questions, and they made me feel very welcome, and we had a good time. So hats off to all the kids at Rodriguez Prep Academy. Next slide. And as was mentioned, the annual Headdress Ball was wonderful. Board Member Alexander did a great job being the emcee and putting together the ball. But I just want to thank the Assistance League for all they do for our students. You know, between the Dr. Crane Dental Services that our kids provide, the Operation School Bell to provide our needy kids with vital clothes and personal hygiene. They just do a lot of great things for the district. And I just want to shout out to Dr. Shirley Jean, Yosemite Savallos, Heather Lozano, all employees of the district, who were three of the models at the Headdress Ball and did an amazing, an amazing job. So good job to you, Ms. Alexander. It was a great event, great event. Next slide. And as was mentioned by President Savallos, we had our first annual Top 50 Graduating Latinos, high school Latinos, that was called Raíces y Alas. And I too want to thank not only Joe Baca Jr. for his support and giving us the opportunity to provide this ceremony in the county supervisor chambers. But I want to thank Tony Plana for being the keynote speaker, and again, investing in our kids. And Dr. Rodriguez, thank you for taking this vision that was thrown out by one of our parents and bringing it together. It was, it was a great event, and we're looking forward to that event for years to come. So it was a very nice event. Next slide. And again, what was mentioned, it was an honor to be at our pride event at Indian Springs High School. Again, shout out to Colleen Williams and her team for putting together an outstanding ceremony. I want to give kudos to Dr. Funches and Board Member Grande for their powerful and very supportive words toward our students. And I'm just very proud to be part of a district that values inclusive excellence, that we go out of our way to make sure all of our kids know that they are heard, seen, valued, and loved. So this is a great event. So, you know, Colleen, thank you for your work. I want to thank Brian Wing as well. He comes every year to run the music. And the bands that were coming through there were excellent. And so it's just a fun event for our kids, families, and staff. Next slide. You know, we don't often speak about our outstanding adult education program. We have probably one of the best adult education programs, I would say, in the state of California. I'm bold enough to say that. And this is just one example of what our adult program does. This was the Certified Nurses Assistance Graduation last week. And Vice Principal John Carranza and Principal Raul Paderosa did a great job emceeing the event. But this is another example of... But this is another example of as the district goes, the city goes. We are creating employers to be employed right here in the city of San Bernardino coming out of our program. So a shout out to our adult ed program. They do a really great job. And I appreciate the board's support of our adult education. Next slide. And this was a, I want to share, this is kind of a special day. Lancashire Elementary has a career week every year. This was their 28th annual career week. And I know some of you have been invited to speak and I was asked to be the opening keynote speaker to the kids on Monday. But what made this extra special is Gail Shaw, who's a kindergarten teacher there, has been running this career week for 28 years. She met her husband on that first career week 28 years ago. Regretfully, he passed away this past year. But they dedicated this year to Gail's husband, Steve Raymond Shaw. So I just want to throw that out there and just remind everyone of the legacy of Steve Shaw. And just a special thanks to Gail for not only keeping his legacy alive, but also providing this opportunity for our kids to know that they have a future coming out of this district. So thank you, Lancashire staff, for that opportunity. And Gail, thank you for all your work. Next slide. And I just want to end with, I always like to spotlight San Bernardino City Unified School District graduates to go on to do great things. My boyhood, childhood friend Reggie Tompkins was named superintendent at Albert Unified School District. He's a Cajon graduate of 1984. He and I went to junior high school together. We've been friends and colleagues ever since. Just a great guy. Million-dollar smile. I just wanted to say that I'm very proud of him. And somebody was making note that, I think right now, we have five superintendents in the state of California that are graduates of the San Bernardino City Unified School District. We have Gordon Amerson, who's at Valverde, Darren Brawley, who's at Compton, Reggie, who's at Albert, Brad Mason, who's in Whittier, and myself. So good, good people coming out of San Bernardino Unified School District and doing great things in the community. So very proud of Reggie and, you know, just, he's going to be a great superintendent. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you, President Sevayos.
You left off Dr. White, who's the interim at Rialto right now.
Oh, that's correct. Dr. Judy White is a Cajon High School graduate. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. You're absolutely correct.
Oh, amazing, amazing report. 13.0 summary of board members' requests, 13.1 review of requests.
Good evening. The first request is from President Sevayos with regard to the special education presentation requested the breakdown of staffing and students within each cluster, including the name of the site. President Sevayos also requested data of how many non-public students return within a year. Mr. Tillman requested a report of how many IEPs were done each year for the last three years. President Sevayos requested information on how many students are pending assessments. President Sevayos also requested for more info via the Friday update on how many students initially come to the district, how many pending we have, and distinguish which ones are IRC referrals, which ones are parent referred, et cetera. Mrs. Alexander requested to explore budgeting regarding the potential impact of reduction on enrollment. Understanding to manage the public perception to highlight our oversight of the budget and preparedness for the possible reduction in funds. Ms. Rosales Medina requested for support to create resolution for AB 316, that is regarding the high school pupil voter registration. There was consensus for it. And that was it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. 14.0, meeting adjournment, 14.1 in memoriam. The board would like to recognize and close the board meeting with a moment of silence in memory for Betty Dean Anderson, who recently passed away. Betty began her career in 1961 as a biology teacher in Eisenhower High School. And during her 31-year career with the district, she worked at several different school sites, including Golden Valley and Serrano Middle Schools, Pacific and High School, Pacific and Cajon High Schools. She rose through the rings to become a high school administrator admired for her intellect, fairness, and deep commitment to students. After retiring from the district in 1992, Betty became a San Bernardino City Councilwoman, sixth ward, where she championed affordable housing, job training for youth, and economic development that revitalized underserved neighborhoods. She also co-founded the Swans Club and the San Bernardino Valley Chapter of the Lynx Incorporated, helping to create pathways for young women. Betty will be fondly remembered for her service to SBC USD and the San Bernardino community, her strength and compassion, and her love for her family and friends.
Move.
Second.
I think we're doing, I think we're doing a moment of silence. All right, 14.2 adjournment.
Move.
Second.
Thank you.